December 2nd, 2024 at 5:30 here at the Lakeville Police Station. Lake Ham is recording. Is there anybody else in the audience recording this meeting? Seeing none? If you could all join me for a stand-up pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Happy December, everybody. I have a few announcements to go over. Department of Public Works is looking for snowplow contractors for the upcoming winter season. Information is available at www.lakefillma.org, or you can call 508-947-9521 for additional information. So if you're interested in helping out, we could certainly use a few good plows. The Lakeville Arts Council will be hosting All That Glitters Holiday Shopping Event that will take place Friday evening, December 6th between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. And Saturday, December 7th between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Inside the Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp. It's a great event and we hope that get everybody out to support our local artisans. Our Lakeville Lions Club will be hosting a Christmas tree lighting and toy drive at their clubhouse at 170 Main Street on December 7th at 6:00 p.m. There will be smores, hot chocolate, warm cookies, and perhaps even a visit from Santa. They're accepting unwrapped toys to be donated to the Toys for Tots program. And I'd also like to give a little shout-out to them. I noticed that they were in the islands this weekend and it was bloody cold out there and they were out there and cleaning them up, making them look really nice. So thank you very much for that. You're also invited to join the Friends of the Animal Shelter at the Old Town House to enjoy some hot cocoa and treats and watch the judging of the decorated snow people on December 14th at 2:00 p.m. So you might have seen some, you know, white decorations out on the lawn in front of the Old Town Hall and the library. All of the snow people that have turned in and they, I believe it was over 100 people that were participating. So if you get a chance during the day when, you know, it gets up to maybe 37 degrees, maybe you could take a walk through and take a look at some of the creative talent that people have brought to their snow people. On December 15th, Santa Claus will be visiting the Lakeville, will be visiting Lakeville escorted by his favorite Lakeville firefighters riding on a Lakeville fire engine. His visit starts at 9:00 a.m. at the Taunton Street near the town line and he will continue through Lakeville. Please visit their town, the town's website or the Lakeville Fire Department Facebook page to view the maps showing Santa's route. And I know that this is probably year four? Three? At least three.
At least three if not four, yeah.
Yeah, well, and that seems to be very well received. I know I run out there and kind of nice, you know, feel like a kid again. Anybody else from the select board have any announcements or things that they'd like to add?
No, I just wanted to thank Sue Spieller for putting together the snow people. I know she worked very hard on it and we're going to be the beneficiary or the, our animals are going to be the beneficiary of all of her hard work.
Yeah. Oh, it's a great, great event. Okay, Andrew, would you like to give us your report?
Yes, so bids came back on the Ted Williams Camp camera project at $14,287. It's about $10,000 underneath what we thought it was going to be. So surprising, but good news. I've been kind of telling the board about the Budget Day Coalition Tree Donation. It's probably not going to work out this year, but I was thinking probably starting in July next year, really planning out like a, either an event or like lighting of a tree in front of Town Hall. So Christmas might look a little bit different next year, but in a good way, I guess. A monthly newsletter, this will probably be handled more towards the end of the meeting, but we have created a monthly newsletter and it's going to go live January 1st. It's going to get a lot of the news that we have out there that I don't think we really do a good job of at the moment. Lacey has been great at putting that together. And the last highlight of the report is the next meeting. I'm not sure the board's really done this in the past, but we're going to do like a budget calendar overview and select board priorities. So we're gonna, Mike actually and I are going to present next week, or two weeks. You guys can kind of give what you're looking for, maybe. Money's going to be kind of tight next year, but we'd generally like to hear your feedback and see where you want to put money. But more info will be coming on that.
Okay.
That's all I have for right now.
Excellent.
One question, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
On the Ted Williams camera project, there was some back and forth when we originally allocated the money on whether there was trenching involved or not. Did that get figured out?
That is not within this cost, but I think it's only like a, maybe a thousand bucks or two. So it'll fit within the budget.
Okay, thank you.
So that won't be a problem, yep.
It looks like, you know, with regards to the ADA ramp at the old library, I know that that has been in movement for quite some time. So this would be nice to have that access.
Yeah, we have quite a bit of money. We got $75,000 through the earmark from Sandra Roderick's office and we have existing maybe $27,000. I think bids came in around 58 a couple of years ago, so I think we'll have plenty of money. And then maybe we could out, we allocate it for another ADA project over there.
Sure.
So something to look at.
I know that's great. Like to see, I know when you think back on some of the, you know, the topics that were originally discussed and then, you know, seeing them come to fruition is kind of a nice thing. Because they certainly benefit the residents in town. All right, anybody else have anything for Andrew? Okay. All right, so we have a couple of sets of minutes to approve November 12th and November 18th. So I will certainly entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of November 12th and the Select Board Meeting Minutes of November 18th.
Do you want them separate?
Motion and a second discussion.
I don't know if you wanted them separate or together, sorry. First one's short.
We can do them together. Did anybody have any corrections, additions? Okay, in a roll, please.
Donahue, I?
Carbone, I?
Can you do I?
Yeah, I.
All right, I would like to introduce and invite our newest member to the Town of Lakeville family up. So some of you, if you remember, we had an announcement not too long ago where our town accountant, who had been working with us for about nine years, was basically retiring from the Town of Lakeville, which opened up an opportunity for us to, you know, fill the position. So we put together a job description and we hired somebody from within and I'm going to turn this over to Andrew if you wouldn't mind doing the introduction. That would be great.
Yeah, so Mike started a few weeks ago. He's been great to deal with so far. Comes with a great background, 12 years with the Town of Born, three years, I think, with an inside audit firm that specialized in municipal work. So he's very experienced. He lives in Lakeville, which is always a benefit, kind of knows the issues, goes to town meetings. So he kind of has a background of everything kind of going on. He's been sitting, kind of shadowing Todd once or twice a week. He's picking things up pretty quickly. I envision him to be someone that's kind of going to be on the leadership team going forward and definitely involved in the budget a lot. And so I figured it'd be a good time for you guys to formally meet him, ask any questions you might have. Could be tough ones, easy ones. He might have a few words to say himself, so.
Very happy to have you here and I know that you've been making the rounds with other boards, committees, and commissions to introduce yourself, which I think is wonderful. And, you know, I know for one that coming into a, you know, a new role, it takes a little time for transition, but where you have such a vast background, you know, in municipal government that, you know, I'm sure your transition is not as difficult because you kind of know who we all are.
Yeah.
You know, being a resident, but I know for one, I'm very happy that you're here.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here.
Oh, very excited. Met Michael last week?
Yep.
Last week, yeah. Last week. So big shoes to fill. Todd's been doing it a long time. I'm hoping for great transparency, great explanations when we need to understand something that maybe we're just not getting and just looking for someone to give their all and try to find, you know, magic resources for the Town of Lakeville and be really good stewards with the people's money.
Similar, I mean, everybody has spoken very highly of you, those that were involved in interviewing, those that knew you from working with you previously. So welcome aboard. I think for us, we're probably going to look to you and Andrew to say, okay, now that we have a full-time accountant for the first time in I don't know how long, what are the other things you think that we should be doing in utilizing that extra time? So, you know, Todd was amazing in the days per week that he was here and such, but what are some of the things that we could actually put some more focus on now?
Yeah.
So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Not really much else to do, sadly, kind of covered it all. I don't expect miracles from anybody.
I do.
Unrealistic expectation. It looked like a great resume and, you know, you have some work, so, or some work experience, so.
Thank you for all.
Thank you.
Are you going to stay with us for the meeting or at least through the tax hearing? Anything that has a dollar sign on it, right, you know, stick around for?
Absolutely.
He'll be back for like plenty of meetings too, December, January. He'll be seeing them, you know, quite frequently.
Good times. Blue to the hip.
Thank you all.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we still have a few minutes before tax classification hearing. So let's see, we get something really... So. Agenda item number 10? I don't know, I don't know if the chief was going to be here. Is this, are we going to move this one?
This is the one that's getting moved to the 16th.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I think I saw there was an application deadline of 20th. Is he going to have adequate time to prepare?
Yeah, I think, yeah, he's going to request that we move it today.
Okay.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to move agenda item number 10 to our next meeting, which is December 10th, I believe.
16th.
16th, there we go.
So moved?
Second with discussion?
Go ahead.
This is a matching grant. Where would the funds be coming from?
I think this would come from capital. It's, I think he said it was only like $20,000 to get like $850,000, I think is what it was.
It's a 5% match over two years. It was 35 and 3,700, something like that.
Yeah.
Small.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to make sure we're allocating it.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the capital plan, definitely, one way or the other. I think he said it's kind of a low chance of getting it, but you get points every time you apply.
So is he going to have an overall capital plan item? Because this wouldn't fall into the guidelines of what would fall on the capital plan for dollar-wise.
See, honestly, I'm not really sure on it, to be honest with you. I think it's just going to be like a placeholder in case he doesn't get the grant. I think he wants to eventually get one either way.
Oh, no, but my point was on the capital items. It's $10,000.
So it would be a $35,000.
Did I miss here the first year?
$38,000 total.
Oh, okay, so it's...
Yeah, one is $6,000, one is $35,000.
Got it.
Yeah, $35,000 for the fire truck.
Got it, okay. We want a discussion? You're in, roll please.
Donahue, I?
Carbone, I?
Can you do I?
Do I?
Let's remove that. All right, I'd like to invite our assessors up. It's 5:45. This is an annual hearing that we hold. It's our tax classification hearing for the next fiscal year. And we have Representative Dave Goldman from RRG and our chair of our assessors, John Oliver. Evening. And I'm going to move because it's right in my face. Madam Chair? Yeah? Do you have the legal ad in your packet? I do not believe so because I do need to open the hearing, so. Yes, this is the hearing. I do not have the legal ad, so if somebody could grab that for me, I can take it without. Let's see. Okay, I have it here. Okay, so let me read the notice. The Select Board in compliance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter 40, Sections 56 as amended, will conduct a public hearing to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property and personal property for fiscal year 2025 on Monday, November 18th. Well, actually, we moved it, so it's December 2nd, 2024 at 5:45 p.m. Said hearing will be held in the Rita A. Garbutt Community Meeting Room at the Lakeville Police Station located at 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. Signed by the Select Board members Lorraine Carbone, Valgalia Fabian, Brian Day, Maureen Candido, and Brenna Donahue. So I'll entertain a motion to open the tax classification hearing.
So move.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Actually, it's a continuation.
Oh, because we did open it.
Correct.
So I'll entertain a motion to continue the tax classification hearing.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Roll, please. Carbone, I?
Can you do I?
Do I?
All right, I will turn this over to you now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. So I am going to do very little talking. Dave Goldman with RRG is going to do the presentation and I'm just here as very bad window dressing for the, so go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Dave Golden. I'm a contract assessor working with Regional Resource Group. I'm here tonight in my capacity as the Associate Regional Assessor for the Town of Lakeville. In addition to that role, I'm also the Tax Board Coordinator for our company as well as a Vice President. Tonight, as we have already heard, is our tax classification hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to set the fiscal year 2025 tax rate. I'm presenting on behalf of the Lakeville Board of Assessors as well as Harold Scheid, who is the principal assessor for the Town of Lakeville and our company's CEO.
Excuse me, David, just for the purposes of the residents here and the audience, if we could just speak up just a little bit because it doesn't pick up on...
Sure. Do you want me to turn around? By way of introduction, each year prior to the mailing of third quarter tax bills, the Select Board holds a public hearing pursuant to match General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as you folks have already heard. There are a number of steps that have already happened prior to this classification hearing. I'm not going to go through them in depth, but as you can see, it's a lengthy process that starts with the budget setting process, which is ultimately approved by your town meeting. Then in the background, the Assessor's Office through me is working with the Department of Revenue to certify new growth revenues, to set valuations for the various classes of property in town and ultimately receiving certification for those valuations. We're in the middle step here now, which is the classification hearing. Going through the presentation as we speak. I'll give the Select Board some information so that they can review and discuss tax shift options and then the board will vote for a tax shift factor. Once the hearing is completed, I'll do all the behind-the-scenes paperwork. I'll get the assessors to sign off on it. I'll submit our annual tax rate recapitulation to the Department of Revenue and they will approve a tax rate for us. Some terms that you folks want to know as we're going through this process. The first is levy, which is the tax levy or simply the levy. This is the amount of property taxes that are going to be raised. The levy amount is determined by the budget setting process. It is the total amount of approved budget items less revenues from other sources. This is mortgageable exemptions, local receipts for fees and licenses, things like that, as well as state aid. This year, the levy is set at $30,111,345.90. The levy ceiling, this is the highest amount that Lakeville could ever raise in taxes, given any kind of a rise that you folks would want to do. The way you find the levy ceiling is taking 2.5% of the full value of the town's, of all the property in town. Our total valuation is just about $2.9 billion, so we can't levy in excess of $72,732,718. Madam Chair, there's a question. I'm happy to take questions as we go along. I defer to you as to how you would like for me to handle the questions from the audience.
Can you hold your questions until the end, just to get through this?
Excellent, thank you. The next term that you folks should know is new growth revenues. This is, this is property taxes that are derived from any sort of new construction in town. It can be as simple as a deck or a gazebo or a shed in your yard or it could be as large as a storage facility or a new multifamily complex. This year, we've certified new growth at $251,565. The levy limit is also referred to as the maximum allowable levy. This is calculated by adding 2.5% to the previous year's levy limit and I'll go through the math in just a second. Adding additionally new certified growth, certified new growth, rather, in any proposition 2.5 in voted revenues to be collected in addition to last year's levy. The maximum allowable levy for this year for fiscal year '25 is certified at $30,114,72. That leaves us with excess levy. And I'm going to skip down for just a second. Our excess levy is coming in at about $2,700. Excess levy is the difference between the levy and the levy limit. So this is how it all works out math-wise. Your levy limit last year was $28,125,641. 2.5% above that would be $7,3141 additional dollars. Your new growth, again, is $251,565. You have some debt exclusions at $1,033,725. All of that rolls up into this line, which is the maximum allowable levy. We take away the excess levy capacity and that comes to the levy to be raised or just the levy. So the maximum allowable levy minus the excess levy capacity is the levy to be raised. That brings us to a tax rate. The way you arrive at your tax rate, and this is an estimated tax rate, this could be a penny up or down depending on how the rounding happens in the DOR system. You take the levy to be raised, divide it by the townwide valuation and multiply that by 1,000 and we arrive at $10.35. For your informational purposes, last year's levy was $29,197,98.81. The amount being raised above that is about $920,000 or 3.2%, which is, in my experience of our communities, a marginal increase compared to what other communities are seeing, especially in light of the rampant inflation that communities are grappling with. I've given you some information about the valuations across town. The most, the highlight here is that most of your valuation comes from residential properties and later on in the presentation, you'll see that the vast majority of that number comes from single-family residences. So most taxpayers in Lakeville are single-family homeowners. That's about 88% of the levy, I assume, of the valuation in town. Commercial, industrial, and personal property represent about 11%. So very, very minor commercial, industrial, and personal property tax base. I gave you this information because municipalities are allowed to shift the tax burden away from the residential taxpayer and onto the commercial taxpayer. Those municipalities that have large commercial or industrial tax bases often seek fit to make that shift. Here in Lakeville, we have a very small commercial tax base and it's mostly built up of modern pop-type shops. So in order to create any kind of impact for the residential taxpayer, we would need about a 7.5% increase to the commercial rate in order to yield a 1% increase for the, assuming a 1% decrease in the average residential tax bill. I go with the Board of Assessors and given this information, they are recommending to the Select Board by way of unanimous vote that you continue to pursue a single tax rate for the Town of Lakeville. Given those factors, we've calculated the property taxes for each class, in this case, all classes. In fiscal year '24, it was $10.55 per $1,000 valuation. Our projected tax rate this year would be, again, $10.35 per $1,000 valuation. What does that look like for the average taxpayer? Well, for the folks who are, we do this as single-family residents and we do these as averages, so this is, there are some that are much higher than this, some that are much lower than this. But the average valuation for fiscal year '24 was $550,500. At a tax rate of $10.55, you were seeing an average tax bill of $58.08. In fiscal year '25, the average single-family valuation has risen to $572,600. At a tax rate of $10.35, it would be a $59.26 tax bill. That's an additional $118 or 2.03% increase in taxes. This is a better breakdown of the information I showed you earlier about valuations. Again, the highlight here is that most of your valuation comes from residential and almost all of that comes from single families. Almost 4,000 single-family properties out of the 5380 here in Lakeville may account for almost $2.29 billion in valuation. So if you, so it's the Select Board's prerogative to decide whether or not they're going to shift the burden. If you are going to accept the assessor's recommendation, I provided a draft motion for you folks in order to set the residential factor at 1 with a corresponding commercial, industrial, personal property shift of 1 as well. For this, if folks, I'll open it up for questions and then if you would like, Madam Chair, we can look at the options table as well.
Maybe the Select Board have any questions at this time?
Just have, maybe one. Did the home prices rise slower or stable in the area as compared to other municipalities? Because I'm seeing 4% on a lot of other municipalities for them raising year over year. I just want to make sure we're not setting our residents up to have a low year this year and then a much higher rate next year.
Well, so my other communities are Avon and Aquina. In Aquina, they went up much, 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 much more. And in Avon, they were about the same.
Anybody else? Ryan?
I was just going to say one comment and one clarifying question. Why, past couple of years, the way I think you refactored this presentation, I really liked. There's a lot more data. I like the way it's laid out. We give the definitions and such. I think it makes it a lot easier for everybody to understand. We get questions every now and then. Just help us, help them. That there's no other tax bracket besides residential or CIP. There's not another rate we can apply to people aside from the tax shift.
Well, I mean, there are a variety of fees and licenses and things like that that you folks issue in order to raise money. But as is the case for almost all of the 352 communities in the Commonwealth, real estate taxes and personal property taxes make up the bulk of what you raise. There are some communities, coastal and island communities... There are some communities, coastal and island communities, that their, for example, their mooring fees outweigh their real estate taxes, but it's exceptionally rare.
But when it comes to, let me restate, I apologize. When it comes to like real estate taxes, right, there's your residential, and there's your commercial industrial. There's not like a small business rate.
I was just going to say, I think that's what you're saying. Do we have small business, a medium business? Can we slice and dice the commercial and industrial?
The only thing that you could do is to also adopt a exemption for small businesses. There's a strict criteria for that, so offhand, they have to have had fewer than 20 employees in the prior calendar year. The property has to be valued at less than $1 million. It has to be fully occupied. I think those are the major criteria. You could do an up to 10% discount for those folks. So like, so that means if it's a million-dollar building and you do a 10% discount, their valuation drops now to $900,000. That $100,000 that comes off of them, though, gets shifted to other commercial and industrial properties, so it doesn't get eaten up by residential taxpayers. The town doesn't lose out on that money. It just gets shifted on to other commercials and industrial.
But it's not a rate, it's an exemption that the town would have to adopt, and it'd be a process.
Yep. Well, it would be you folks that would have that authority, and so we wouldn't have to go through town meeting the same way other exemptions would. But yes, you'd have to adopt it, you'd have to decide at what level, so between 1 and And then folks who are in those types of organizations would then have to apply to receive that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up on Brian's question about the different rates, and you can correct me, because I'll add further expertise on it. But places like Amherst have multiple rates, and one of the rates they have for homeowners is a homeowner rate versus a landlord rate, is my understanding. Also, they have the small business versus the big business versus industrial business. So it's basically split into like five different pricing groups.
I've never seen that.
Okay.
So the small, so the small commercial exemption, again, allows for that 10% reduction. There are some places that adopt a residential exemption as well for folks who are owner-occupied and meet some other criterias, but it's, they're generally, it's generally, you see that in areas that, where there's a large income-producing, multifamily, existing tax base. So perhaps this is what's happening in Amherst. Places that have a lot of, you know, 150-unit residential complexes, they might see something like that. Where, again, you'd have to apply for that exemption.
But in essence, it would be a split rate?
No, it just reduces the, so it reduces the value, so it reduces your tax burden. So the tax rate would stay the same, but your value would be reduced based on the exemption that you qualify for.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any communities that do a residential exemption. I don't think there are any in RRG's portfolio. Avon does do a small commercial exemption. It presents at about a 5% increase to, I assume, a 5 to 6% increase to the commercial and industrial rate.
So I guess going off of Maureen and Brian, are we able to establish other categories, not exemptions, but other categories that we could essentially have a split tax rate?
No.
So by law, we have residential and commercial industrial-based property, or in property?
Yep.
So, okay.
That's the crux of what I was trying to really get to, Madam Chair, is we often hear like, oh, just add a rate for this, add a rate for that. It's very controlled at the state level. It's not something we can do.
Okay. That's good, because we have a chance to pick that out. Brenna, did you have anything, questions? Maureen, at this time, I'd like to open it up to a resident here, if you wouldn't mind. If you can direct them to room A, sir.
Well, let me just say, the proposed property tax for the fire station, that's not at all reflected in this, correct? There will be an increase in each property's tax rate paid for the $22 million bond.
That's outside of this discussion. So whatever tax rate you set, you use that shot to figure out on that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was my one question. I have another idea that I'll wait till we go through the correspondence section.
Good.
Unless you'd like a...
Oh. Mr. Smith?
Let me go back to the slide where it talks about a seven and a half increase for businesses to make up the reduced tax by 1%.
Yeah, so in order for residential taxpayers to realize a 1% reduction in their taxes, given all of this information, we'd have to increase the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxes by about seven and a half percent.
So it's almost, if everything stays the same, there's only only three options. One is continue to have the residents pay the increase in tax, whatever that's going to be. Two is we offset it with raising the tax on the commercial business, or to bring in more business. Is that, am I correct? Say if we had a big company come in, or if we had three or four to come in, that would, conceived would keep our taxes at paying. If you're telling me that we'd have to do a seven and a half increase on a, seems like a very low number, I don't know how other towns are. Is our commercial industrial valuation a percentage lower than other towns?
Yeah, it's pretty low. So as an example, in Avon, where I also work, it's like a 60, I think it's like a 59, 41% split, where 59% of their valuation is residential and 41% is commercial, so...
Which is amazing.
Four times what you guys have.
Four times what it is, so...
But this is probably, this is in line with more, you folks have a commercial base that's probably more in line with most of Massachusetts. Unless we're seeing like an urbanized area, which Lakeville's very far from, you won't see high commercial, industrial, personal property taxes. So I would amend your three, your three options by saying, the option where residential taxpayers continue to pay the increase. It's also the commercial, industrial folks who are paying that increase as well. The option to shift the burden would, they would pay an increase on their value plus the increase on the shift, whether it's seven and a half percent, or you can do up to 50%.
But even with that percentage, you're talking on the residents, that's the same percentage that commercial, industrial getting too. That's not, so that's going to keep it level, so we will continue to have to pay a higher tax. If by your figures there, commercial, industrial get raised the amount that we do, it's not going to offset anything.
Yeah.
Correct?
You know, to your point, Mike, if you turned around and went up that seven and a half percent, I think in rough numbers, you would have a $60 savings on your bill. That's it. So it's still, you're still going to have an increase, but the commercial, but the commercial, no, I'm making your point, but the commercial would have a $2,000 plus increase. So you'd just be, you'd probably ultimately be shrinking that 11, what did we say, 11.7%?
Right.
Even more so. Really the way to do it, and I just don't think Lakeville's going to ever get there, not that we should, but you'd have to, new growth, you'd have to really expand your business base to really make it grow, because then you'd have enough money to say, all right, we don't need to go up that two and a half percent that we can go up.
And the last thing that I want to do, or for anyone, is to outprice our small businesses who are a big part of our town. I mean, you know, we don't really attract a lot of businesses here. We usually one closes, another one goes in. But, you know, my major concern is, we get more residents here, we need more services and so forth. Someone's going to bear that, and it's, the way it's set up now, it's going to be the residents, and we expand, so that's going to keep going. I guess we just got to figure a way to help offset that. And it just seems like the commercial, industrial, right now, is the only way to help, is to help level that up and to make up for 53%, 4%, 5% next year. We don't know. But if we continue to have such a low amount of commercial, industrial revenue here, it's going to fall to us. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I mean, most of your tax, most of your tax revenue comes from the residential taxpayer, as we demonstrated. I'll note here, so the 2% increase in, on average, for taxes, that $118, you'd have to increase taxes on the commercial, industrial, and personal property folks by 15% in order to get to that, to wipe that number out. And that's a one-time savings. Pretty much after that, you're always going to, I mean, the only constants in life are death and taxes, right? I think folks can anticipate that your taxes will continue to increase. The only way to mitigate that is by spending less, or bringing in more through grants and state aid, other revenue sources. Those are the only ways that you can, you can offset your, the increases that taxpayers are receiving. And, you know, town meeting is you guys, so you guys took a bunch of priorities.
Thank you.
Chair?
So the development that's been discussed, 43 Main Street, with Rhino, got the 55-plus at Lakeville Country Club, a bunch of apartments. How are these properties, proposed properties, when they're built, are they treated as residential for the tenants, for the occupants, or are they also industrial or commercial for these properties? I mean, that's a huge amount of money coming to town, you know, and it seemed to me that would change this whole picture, right? So how are those handled? Like, for instance, right now, the fairways over at LeBaron, those are, I understand, 43 apartments. How are they treated tax-wise?
I would have to look at the account, but they're probably residential.
Okay, so is that answered the question that an apartment building is only taxed only if residents are taxed, not the property owner? Is that how you're going to say it?
No, the property owner is always the one who's taxed. But, I mean, so if you're talking about an apartment complex, the taxes are going to be figured into what your rent is. I mean, they're going, their cap rate's going to be, is going to include what they're paying in taxes, insurance, and things like that.
The property owner pays tax, and the factors that it is, the purchase price of the property. But how, these planned developments affect?
Are you asking about condos or apartments now?
Well, both, because we've got both planned. And right now, from memory, I can't tell you how 43 Main Street will split out. You've got, you know, probably 400 total housing units of different types.
So condos are individual ownership situations. So if there's a condo building with 20 units, there are 21 individual taxpayers in that. That same building, if it's an apartment complex and there's a single owner, there's only one person paying the tax.
So Dave, let me ask you to clarify this, maybe. Apartment building, property owner's going to pay the taxes because he owns the building, but is it the residential rate that he's paying?
Yes.
Okay. Condos, the individual unit owner's paying. Residential rate he's paying?
Yes.
So, I think, John, maybe you're, I'm guessing your question is, are there anybody here paying commercial, like if we went to commercial, all of the, if the use is residential, it's going to get the residential tax rate? It doesn't matter whether it's 500 units owned by one person, that property, because the use is residential, is going to be taxed at the residential rate. We assess based on use.
Is there a possible change to light the level on rental homes?
We can't, we can't have separate rates for apartments versus single families.
I don't think, you can get a thousand more homes, and it's not going to affect us tax-wise, because if that happens, then you're going to need more services, roads are going to need more work, and your school, the fire department's going to need more firefighters and everything. So basically with the homes, it's not going to help with the taxes, because it's probably, at that kind of a number, you're going to require more services, roads will need work, I mean, everything. So like I said, at a thousand more homes, I don't see any difference going in our taxes.
Brian?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I mean, to Mr. Smith's point earlier, you know, more and more residential is absolutely more services, right? So I'll say the unpopular thing nobody wants to say. If 43 Main Street was a warehouse, you have a small number of employees, you have less people there using services, whether it's school, fire, police, et cetera. Now that you're going to have 200, 476 units, whatever the total number is, all those people need services, whether it's water, septic, fire, police, school. So it's absolutely an impact on the town, a negative impact, because we have to come up with more money. In my opinion, our tax rate, whether it's $10.55 this year or $10.35 next year, is highly attractive to businesses compared to local, other towns around us, but our town is so adversarial to any commercial or industrial project that comes to town, half of them never get approved. So if we want to be a better community, and 88% today, probably 95% tomorrow, it's on our shoulders to pay. If we don't want to be that, then we have to find a way to really bring in more economic development. Otherwise, it's never going to get better for us. We will continue to see more and more people priced up, and they'll continue to sell their land to a developer, and then more people get mad when the next housing development comes in. It's cyclical.
It's a lot of the elderly out, too.
Yep. Because a lot of them own the big parcels today, and they're selling off, and they can't afford it. So we've chosen our destiny.
Thank you very much. So I will entertain a motion. Can we have to close the hearing first?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the tax classification hearing for FY '25.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll, please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Do, aye.
Okay. I will entertain a motion from the Lakeville Select Board, votes in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, 56, Section 56 as amended, the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2025 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.0000, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0000, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
So move.
Okay. I have quick discussion. Why, we have a second. Why the tax rate doesn't get read into this motion, I guess is...
Well, the tax rate is subject to, is subject to approval by the DOR.
Okay.
So you're setting the factor, not the tax rate.
Okay.
The factor determines the tax rate upon DOR certification.
Okay. Just thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Roll, please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Do, aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I'll see you next November, or December. Thank you, Tracy. That was way better.
That's really good.
Yes. The last 50 or 60 years. Okay. So we have a few more minutes before we go into a next hearing topic. So if we can move to agenda item number eight, this is a revisit. We brought this up at the last Select Board meeting. We had some questions, and we wanted to bring it back this evening. This is the discussion about the ballot question for January 20, 2025, for the fire station debt exclusion vote. So there was a question, I believe Brenna, you had a question as to why we don't include the exact amount of money that was included and voted at town meeting. I know, Andrew, you reached out to town council, and if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, so I reached out to town council and bond council. They said for the type of project we're doing, we cannot put a number in the question. Even if we were to put a number in the question, it has like no bearing on anything. The number from town meeting is the appropriation. They had said the Lakeville Country Club vote was set up because they kind of knew what the purchase price was. There's two different kinds of debt exclusion. There's two different kinds of debt exclusions you can set up. That one followed that process. This one, and the police station back in, I think, twenty nineteen, have to follow this type of format. And so that's really what I got from both.
And so they reiterated the fact that what was voted at town meeting before, it was the ultimate amount that could be borrowed?
And if it goes a dollar over, we have to go back to town meeting. But the good thing is, within that twenty-one, I think, four number, is that there's a lot of contingency and estimations are kinda over, so that we could pay for it, for what the project is calling for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we need to do at this point is to vote the question, I'll read it. That would go on the ballot for January twenty-eighth, and this needs to get into the town clerk's office by the twenty-third of December. So that's why we wanted to make sure we had some ample time for discussion with this board. So, shall the town of Lakeville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay the cost of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new fire station, including the payment of all costs incidental and relative thereto? There would be a yes or a no? And that would be the ballot question. So this board would need to entertain a motion, or I'll entertain a motion to vote on the language for the ballot for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five for the fire station debt exclusion.
So moved, as presented?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I just wanna make sure Brenna is good with it and satisfied with the answer. It makes sense enough that you feel...
I mean, I don't think it makes sense, but if it's legal's answer, it's legal's answer, so there's nothing else to do.
They do have the market on that, don't they?
Sure do.
A lot of state stuff doesn't make sense.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll, please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Do, aye.
So if we could get that to Willian?
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Let's jump down to agenda item number twelve. So a couple of meetings ago, we talked about appointing a liaison to our Parks Commission. And typically, when we reorganize in April, we have a list of, I guess, representation that the board can support, and we vote a liaison. So for whatever reason, we never did that for the Parks Commission, so we're bringing that back this evening so that we can appoint a representative to Parks. So I will entertain a nomination for a volunteer for the Parks.
I don't mind doing it, but I'm only here until February unless I choose to run again, and if I did, I might not win. So if we're looking at turning the Parks into a department, it should, I think it should be someone who's going to be here longer, so that they can work with the Parks to figure out what the Parks does, figure out how that's gonna transfer over, and then manage the transition as, you know, it happens at town meeting next year and everything. So, like I said, I'm willing to do it. I don't have a problem doing it, and I can help how I can, but I, I don't know. Maybe we can hear from the Parks chair.
I can say that.
Whole place not full.
You know, just a little about what our liaison representative pretty much will be that conduit from this board to whatever the designated position would be. So in this case, they would work with the Parks. So if the Parks had a concern, question, they could, you know, work with liaison, the liaison would bring it back, you know, for discussion at this board. So that's kind of where we're, where we're at.
So right now, let's just say the last year and a half, our conduit's been our town administrator, it's been Bob and Andrew. Tracy can attest to, I'm in their offices three or four times a week, which is fine. They're very happy to help me. I just have a lot of questions for them, and I've gotten my answers within one or two days. It's been great. I think the disconnect is, as you said, the best way to us to communicate with you is through, would be through Andrew. But sometimes we, like, if I look on the agenda and I'll see some things, I'm going, oh, that's maybe something that I should attend to. And the Parks liaison isn't someone who comes to the meetings all the time, just when we have questions or, to say, if Brenna, she's gonna say, hey, this is what we're talking about, maybe you guys should put it on agenda and talk about, and maybe come to a meeting, because obviously, you're the ones who form the ideas and then go through with it, and then, so there are gonna be some subjects that maybe the liaison or whoever will discuss, hey, maybe we should talk to the Select Board about this, or let, let me know what your concerns are, and I'll bring it to the Select Board. So we haven't had that for a while, and I think what really caught up to us is that we assume what's going on with our burn capital this last two or three years, that it was fine. And that's not going to stop, because we do have future projects. I'm hoping, being on the Capital Expenditure Committee, get some free cash to finish some projects. There's, you know, other things, the EVs, there's always something going involved with the fire station coming in, which is great. I think it's all wonderful. But I think, as we talked about before, the communication channels have to be clear bit, a lot clearer. And, you know, me dealing with Andrew's been excellent, Tracy, but I think it's very important for someone on the Select Board, not to bypass Andrew, but it's more of this, it's more of the liaison telling us, hey, this is what we're thinking about, put it on the agenda, or whatever. So it's not so much us calling, say, it's Brenna.
Right.
Telling her, come, no, we can do that with Andrew. It's more of the Select Board coming to us, hey, these are the concerns we have going, you know, whether it's Clear Pond or whatever, what's going on at Ted. And so the liaison gives us a heads-up, and then that will make us have the answers or, you know, at least address it at a meeting. So it's, it's not a, a burdenous job, I don't think, because the Parks obviously isn't on all the time, it just has been with what's going on. But it's just someone who can give us a heads-up when you guys are discussing something that may have something to do with us.
Yes.
Comments? I agree. I think we could always do better with our communication out to the boards. I know we used to have a position that just made sure that the boards and the Select Board were aligned, so that was a good position. And I know you guys had some loss when the town planner left. I see this role as, just as you said, someone giving a heads-up to your board. Obviously, everyone knows with the liaison position, they don't have power to say that we will do this, we will do that. It's just the in-between person bringing things back and forth. But what I, where I really see a benefit for the Parks, and where I would love to see some more structure around, is the relationship with the, with the incoming, if we are hiring someone, director, manager of planning, how did we phrase it?
Town planner.
Town planner? So the town planner role.
Right, which we did spend time with. He gave us ideas about John Pond and whatever, which is another great source of information. As far as, I think, the elections are...
But if Brenna was saying continuity and worried about continuity, I think the continuity would come in through the planner and whatever the liaison role would be, be able to transition if it needed to, you know, throughout there, whereas in the continuity would be with the planner. But I would probably recommend that the planner and the liaison work together, as opposed to it being two separate streams, just to make sure everyone knows what everyone else is doing.
But the planner is just for kind of projects and grants, where the liaison, I mean, that's what, wasn't Mark, Mr. Resnick?
Yep.
This is just more of things that have to do with operations and so forth.
Land use.
And use and everything like that. So, like I said, we're just looking for a heads-up, for a liaison.
Like we could've said, Mr. Smith, Chairman Smith, we're talking about you on agenda item number twelve this evening, about a liaison.
Yeah, exactly. And I didn't, like I said, I always look at the agenda, and then I talk to Andrew, and, listen, I'm glad it's on there, there's no upset, but I didn't, and it's like the EV, we talked about the EV today.
It will be, yeah, it will be...
No, but I'm just saying, these are things that, just, hey, by the way, this is gonna be on the agenda, if you wanna show up, great. If you need any more information, I can get it for you, and then, so that's pretty much what I've been looking for.
I was just gonna say, one of the things we've always talked about is, you know, are we utilizing resources correctly? And just wanna remind people, since it's been a while, but the twenty twenty-one job posting for the Assistant to the TA specifically says, represents the town administration at meetings of board and commissions and other events as directed. I mean, that's kind of a liaison role right there, that isn't directly to one particular, but like, hey, represent the administration, which I consider us part of.
I hadn't thought about that. Okay, but for tonight, is there, so Brenna said that she'd be happy to do it. I know it's through April, not February, so you're here till April.
April twenty-two, seven.
So is, is the Assistant to the town administrator going to these meetings?
I don't know.
That's the issue. There's gonna be another, another fork in the road. I'd rather just have no fork and just go straight to the liaison instead of another person, and if they're not dealing with you on a weekly basis, they're not gonna know, then I'm gonna be staring at Andrew again all the time.
So I'll entertain a... A motion.
I will nominate Brenna as the next Parks liaison.
Second.
For the Select Board, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Do, aye.
Thank you, Brenna.
Thank you, everyone. Brenna, happy to...
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay. Now I'd like to go to, back to agenda item number seven. So this is a continuation of a public hearing that we continued from November eighteenth. So at this time, there was information being collected from the Conservation Commission, and they are, continued that part of their hearing until December tenth, I believe. So we will have some more information that we can discuss for this particular item on the sixteenth at our next meeting. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for one sixty Bedford Street to December sixteenth at six-thirty PM here at the Lakeville Police Station.
So moved.
Motion and a second, and there's no discussion.
I have discussion, sorry. I was just trying to look at the calendar real quick. Have they even gotten to the notice of intent yet, or are they still working on...
They're still working on that.
So by the sixteenth, they might not have even...
By the tenth, I would think, right.
I feel like we're gonna be continuing again.
And it's possible.
Okay.
Is there business operating?
At this time, we cannot discuss any, anything about this. So this is, right now, it's about the continuation. So I'd have to do roll.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Do, aye.
But I hear your point for you. Okay. And agenda item number nine. I know I'm jumping around, I'm really sorry about that, but I'm trying to fill some time here, but now we can, I think we're gonna be able to roll this right through. So agenda number nine. We had our counterparts in Freetown reach out. They're very interested in having a joint meeting with our Select Board, and we're bringing this, this evening to talk about a date that would work for all of us, that we can propose, and maybe some of the discussion topics that we would like to engage with Freetown Select Board members. And I think there was one date floated around in January that was a possibility.
January sixth.
January sixth.
Before we set a date, what topics, I mean, they reached out, they must've had an idea of what topics they were looking to discuss.
Well, I'm sure we'll get a list of, you know, something that they'd like to discuss, but if there's the things that we as a Select Board would like to discuss as a sister community, we can talk about that and bring it back on the sixteenth, but this will give us some time to think about. I mean, one of the, you know, topics that, you know, we have the MB, what is it, the
MBTA communities?
The communities. Because now that they're, they've changed their status because of the train station going directly through Freetown, they have to build, you know, meet the requirements for that community, which could potentially increase the population at our, our school district. We obviously have a joint, I guess, appetite because we have a joint school, you know, a regional school district, so there's an opportunity, you know, to discuss that, too. But, and to your point, yeah, I'd like to know what they would like to talk with us. I believe there was some question about possibly reviewing the regional school agreement. So that was a topic, I believe, that was, I had heard.
Would that require a three-way agreement with the district itself?
I think that there's a process, and I would actually need to understand more through legal what that process is, because we have not, since we, I guess, voted on that regional agreement, we've never gone back to amend it. Or maybe once, I think we did, but it required a town meeting, joint, joint town meeting, not joint town meeting, but each town meeting had to approve the amendment.
Just from attending that joint finance meeting, they have a big budget, like, every town has a big budget crunch this coming year, and I think they probably wanna maybe address that, because we're gonna be facing the same kind of deal, so.
When was that meeting?
What meeting?
The Joint Finance Committee meeting.
I actually have it in my calendar.
I actually just, you know, I attended.
Wait, was that with the towns or the schools?
That was with the towns. There's a joint school one coming up, I'm looking that one up.
Yeah, the, the Finance Committee from both towns had met in Freetown.
Yes, that one I did see. I got it confused with the school.
December eighteenth.
Got it.
Yeah, thanks.
So what, so January sixth?
Don't, Madam Chair, I always like the idea of both the towns working together, but I do, I get concerned that we're gonna have topics that are not things that we can actually vote on until we get a lot more clarity on what we can do.
So maybe this is not necessarily a vote meeting, but maybe it's more of an information sharing, gathering? Not sure. But if we had something specific...
And how does that work? I can't remember for a Select Board when they have a joint meeting. Do both chairs have to approve the whole agenda?
I'm not sure. I don't, in my recollection, that it had not been on the Select Board at the time, that, you know, there was, you know, one, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, I've been on joint fin comms, and I can't remember at all if we approved the whole thing or just our portion of the agenda to put it out.
I think it's just ours.
I know for the joint finance committees, they've been meeting in Freetown, so Freetown forwards the agenda to the Lakeville Chair, and then he posts, that agenda gets posted. So I don't think they...
So you're not posting an agenda for the finance?
I post it, yes, but it comes from Freetown. Freetown emails it to them. I think it's where whoever's meeting, where they're meeting prepares the agenda, and then it went to Lakeville, and Lakeville passed it to me to post.
I'd love some clarification if that's the exact right steps for the Select Board.
You'll be right, Andrew's looking into that. So I guess, maybe we'll just bring this back on the sixteenth, get some more information, one...
Maybe the chairs can bounce some ideas around.
Get some specifics.
Yeah.
About what to, you know, discuss, because I, I mean, nobody likes to have a meeting just to have... About what to, you know, discuss, because I, I mean, nobody likes to have a meeting just to have a meeting.
No.
You know, I mean, we could certainly all go out to dinner.
No, we can't.
We wouldn't be able to discuss anything at that point, but, um, but I'd like to make sure that we have, you know, something of substance for discussion. But we could bring food.
That sounds good.
Maybe somebody could bring some goodies or something, but, all right, so we'll move this to the sixteenth, and I'll work with you, um, Andrew.
Yeah.
While getting some more information, so. All right, um, let's see. Eleven, eleven? All right. And eleven is, um, we need updates from you, Andrew, on our, the Principal Assessor, Town Planner, and Conservation Agent.
So, on the Conservation, um, Agent, they're gonna have a meeting internally on this Wednesday, so there'll be more information coming back on that position. Um, that's the one that's kind of just on, up in the air at the moment.
Question, Andrew, is it the position that's up in the air, or is it, is there people already?
Yeah, they've, there's been candidates that have been interviewed. They just don't quite know where they're gonna go yet with the candidates, so.
And who's on the interview committee for that?
That is Lacy is the one overseeing it, but it's Nate Darling, um, I think it's, name is Joe Chamberlain, and then there's, um, Nancy Yates, I believe, is the last one. No. Yeah, I think it is Nancy Yates.
Madam Chair, just, um, I will post my objection again. I do think the Planner, um, position should be rolled in with the Conservation position in order to be able to better support ourselves financially in the future and not have as many positions. Just wanted to throw that out there again, because, you know, I like to beat a dead horse.
All right.
Um, so the Town Planner, um, that's, it's most likely gonna come to the sixteenth for an appointment. There's an executive session tonight on that. Um, and then the last one is the Principal Assessor. Come up, John, um, so we interviewed candidates, um, we kind of sent it over to, the interview panel was me, Leah, and John. We, uh, had a candidate that we thought could do the position, um, but there would be a decent amount of money attached to it, um, kind of like bringing that person up to speed and just resources going forward, so it wouldn't just be the salary. The Board of Assessors had a meeting today to discuss it. John, you wanna
Sure.
Say how that meeting went?
Yes, no, absolutely. So, uh, the Board did meet today, as Andrew, um, mentioned, that we did have some, uh, candidates that the Interview Committee, um, did, um, did vet, and obviously, um, I brought that information back to the Board of Assessors, as were the, were the authority for the position of Principal Assessor, and after discussing it, obviously an executive session, because we can't really see any of the names or anything like that. The one candidate that was a possibility, um, there was certifications that would need to have been, uh, obtained. We still would have been outsourcing a significant amount of the responsibilities, uh, potentially even after that certification, uh, came to be, which would have been commercial property valuations, legal, um, utility assessment, uh, forty F, uh, S, which is very important to Lakeville, um, um, expertise. And, you know, at the end of the day, um, we would like to still have the option to take a look at an RFP, to see what we can get out there from other, uh, not just the current, but anyone. Um, and we would work with Andrew to try to figure out and do whatever we can to get other people to, to put in, uh, as well, because fiscally, it would have been tens of thousands of dollars more money in, in the big picture, um, to turn around and, and bring in a Principal Assessor. The other thing that was brought up at our meeting today, um, was that, uh, from a, um, consistency and kind of a redundancy standpoint, the one thing about contracting out, um, irrelevant is to who it is, if something happens with that Principal Assessor position, illness, leave of absence, termination, um, when you just have one, you don't have a backup. You don't have anybody to go to. When you do have a firm that has that, and, and that's, that is an upside for a small community or a small business period, which is why a lot of people do contract out. Again, in a perfect world, we'd have somebody who could fill that role. We could have backup with, and we wouldn't have to outsource and cost the town more money, but, um, at this point, we really think we, we, we aren't doing our proper due diligence without going out for that RFP and taking a, a look at what's out there. We think that may ultimately be our best option.
Okay, so I have a question. So, the contract, the current contract is, is, um, the end of December, is that correct?
Correct.
The term that we have. So, getting out an RFP on December third, um, obviously is not gonna have enough time, so, um, I'm not opposed to, you know, the idea of that, obviously, is, um, you know, you want to make sure that we're covering, you know.
So I think to your point, what are we gonna do in the meantime?
Right.
So I think it's, uh, first of all, and I'll defer to Andrew, I think we may be able to still do this with the timeframes, um, as far as getting in RFPs. We'd have to, I don't want to say fast-track it in a bad way to say, listen, we're gonna compromise ourselves here, but I think we do have the availability. There may be an extra meeting that we're gonna have to call in order to award a contract. Again, if that's where, if, if that's where we end up. I needed to have this meeting first with you folks, and I, I would think, and I don't know how this works, I'm gonna defer to you, Andrew, as far as if we could get some type of an extension in place with the current contract to, to carry us through, um, that potential period where, if, if that even got to that, but I'll, again, I'll defer to Andrew one time, time-wise.
We couldn't do an extension, but we could do like a, uh, short-term, very, very short-term.
Three months.
Like three months, maybe even less than that, depending on how the RFP process goes. I still think we can turn it around pretty quick. I've done faster RFPs than that. But it, it's probably gonna be awarded, like, if we award it, it's gonna be like the first or second week of January, so.
But also, you have an organization that you work with, um, and I don't know what their acronym is, but, um.
You mean the current?
Right, but if we, I'm just thinking that, uh, instead of like sending a contract, if, because I didn't want to rush, like an interim, you know, for a defined period of time, that we could bring in that has that experience to be able to carry. You know?
Oh, uh, M A A O.
M A A O.
Okay. Because I know that they've been a really good resource.
They've been an excellent resource.
So, maybe there's a retired, you know, person that might be able to, you know, be an appointed person just as an interim, um, until we could actually secure a, you know, viable option, you know, to carry the torch.
Like get out coverage to start immediately and then hold on in case of one decision or another?
I was just gonna ask Madam Chair, through you to the other chair, what does this time of year look like for a Principal Assessor? What is the first part of January? Is it busy? Is it slow? What are we expecting?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, so, from this point forward, obviously, we just had the tax classification hearing tonight. There's some bookkeeping, kind of cleanup stuff that's done, but this, this month going forward, um, it's not a ton of heavy lifting. I will say traditionally, the beginning of the year, um, there were inquiries as tax bills go out. Now, based on what we just saw today and, and the corrective action that's been done, I, I don't expect it to be anything crazy. It usually starts up as you get further into, into January, then you get to February, because it's a baby season at, at that point.
Oh, right, right. I don't want to miss that up, because we, now, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, that's, we, you need a Principal Assessor or somebody in, in place. As much as I have confidence in myself and my fellow board members, we are not equipped to be doing the day-to-day work on, on that stuff, so. You know, I, I'm not opposed to getting somebody interim. I just hate for us to do a three-month contract with somebody interim, then we're going through this and we're back here at the very end of the year and say, no, listen, the first week, we have a contract signed, and now we got a new contract and an extra person, and like I said, I mean, our Board, I understand, our purview is, is assessment, but as residents, um, of Lakeville, the three of us are pretty fiscally aware, and we don't want to waste money that we don't have, so. I mean, maybe, if, you know, you, I mean, there will be another meeting, obviously, in two weeks. And if we're at a position where this is looking like it's not gonna happen sooner rather than later, I don't know if there's a very, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll make the inquiry at this point with M A A O, but I don't know whether we make our decision now or in two weeks to get an interim.
Right, I'm not saying, right, yeah. Andrew, what is your recommendation?
I would say to put out the RFP this week, see what we get back. I'd, I'd just put it out for two weeks, so we'll know way around Christmas what we have or not, and then, um, I'll fast-track the whole process, but I think it'll be a, a contract award of some kind, probably first or second week of January.
I just, Madam Chair, um, I just worry that, I'm not a big fan of just-in-time. I like to have contingencies built into my contingencies.
I hear you.
Yeah, so I do appreciate if, you know, if you are going to reach out and just make sure we have a knowledge on how long it would take. Is there anyone actually readily available, like all of those mitigating circumstances?
My, my question would really be, how long's this gonna take if we say, listen, we need an interim? If the answer is, we can get somebody in place, usually there's people who are retired and are looking for a little work here and there, we can get something in place within a couple of weeks, okay, good. If you're telling me you need at least a thirty-day window, that's a different story at that point, because we don't want to be January twenty ninth looking for, you know, somebody to come in and start that day.
I was just gonna say, I don't like just-in-time either, but I would put that responsibility back on us, because we're consistently coming up with, oh, the contract is firing soon, like, we need to do a better job timing these things and knowing when they're gonna come up and getting involved much earlier to figure out what are we gonna do?
I do not disagree. I was actually, I, uh, thought that we voted in our last meeting to do the RFP and to go out for it. So I was actually surprised that that wasn't
I don't think they got anybody.
Was it a previous, right, a previous meeting, because we, we had ample notice.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that, you know, we've done the job descriptions, we've done the RFP, you know, descriptions.
Not exactly.
Yeah. Creating our own chaos is never a situation.
Yes.
We did go out for the RFP.
Yeah, so we, we did go out for it, but it wasn't really, the process wasn't run how I would run it. Um, and so I don't, I don't, I think the, the company that R R G wasn't really notified. I didn't really have a chance to really put it in. At least how I'm, my best practice is I usually send out the RFP straight to the person on contract, and I don't think that was really the case. So I think there was just a lapse of
So no one?
No one put in.
Protocol, okay.
And there's, there's, there's some stuff in the RFP that really shouldn't have been, and I think we're gonna make changes to it, so. It's gonna be a lot better this time around, long story short.
Late meeting tonight after this one, I'm not ready.
Oh, uh, yeah, yeah.
Andrew and I will do whatever we've had to, we have to do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The advertising, though, it can't go out till, it won't get in till next week.
Right.
So that brings us to Christmas, literally Christmas Day. And we can't have him do the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth, so we wouldn't be able to have him doodle the twenty-sixth of December.
Is what it is.
So that's, you know, there's not much we can do about that, because it's gotta go in the state publication.
Right, right.
But in the meantime, you don't really find out what we would need to do to bring in an interim, um, you know, because I don't want to rush into anything, or, you know, I just want to make sure that, um.
I don't think an extra set of eyes would be hurtful anyways, just in, if we did end up, say, we went for RFP again, and R R G was the only one, you know, applying, and, and we couldn't find a suitable candidate. Um, I don't think an extra set of eyes would be a, a bad thing for processes on someone that is, um, you know, inexperienced type of person that you would be finding in the, in the conversation with the M A O O.
Good job.
I'm on, I'm on.
I'm on.
All right, so, um, I, I don't know that it requires any
No, I don't think it does. It, it is an update.
All right, let's make our
And I will work with Andrew and we'll get this thing.
Let's make our town hall. Almost there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Okay. Thirteen, uh, did we talk about the planner? Did I miss it? Am I?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, there'll be a recommendation at the sixteenth meeting.
The sixteenth, yes, I can write it down.
Okay, um, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, uh, about, um, discussing and voting on selecting a Select Board member for the City of Taunton Water Discussions. And, um, Andrew, if you wouldn't mind filling us in on, um, a little bit about what this is all about.
Yes, so the, the history on it is, um, LeBaron Hills representatives would like to present to you at some point. I think it's been, um, going on a few months now, um, and they've had a couple of people, I think, in the hospital or not ready to come to the thing. This goes back to when Bob was here. And so me and Nate finally met with the representative from LeBaron, um, and they've kind of said that they hadn't talked to Taunton in like two years about their issues. Um, I think they, they were worried that they were kind of stonewalled, but I think they were reaching out to the wrong people in Taunton. So I recommended reaching out to my former supervisor there, who was the CFO, um, and he said we could meet, um, them on December fifth, um, and just, and speaking with him quickly, it's not just the LeBaron problem, it's the Clark Shores problem, and then there's the overarching inter municipal agreement, that I think they're opening into looking at, depending on what our thoughts are. But I thought someone from the Board would be a good person to have there at that meeting with me, Nate, and the representatives from Taunton.
Can you tell me when that is again?
December fifth at one o'clock.
So, because this is not just Taunton, um, because we do have Middleborough Water as well in some locations, so maybe this becomes, um,
The Water Board?
The Water. I don't know that I would say that, um, but, um, maybe it becomes the Select Board member, um, as a municipal water
Representative.
Representative.
Madam Chair, I'm not signing up to be a new liaison, but as far as the LeBaron Hills stuff goes, I am relatively well briefed on that. If somebody, and I think I can make the Thursday meeting if the Board would like me to do that one.
Well, we wouldn't be making you a liaison, but, um, I think we would
I would be the Water Board.
Be able to, once you're, just be available, because as these other concerns come up, I think.
Because those folks have, they were reaching out last calendar year even.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Brian Day, um, as our new Select Board member, um, municipal water.
Oh, God.
It has to say Water Board.
No, I guess, because it's on the, we'll say Taunton Water, um, but because it's on the agenda, I didn't. But it's a water, municipal water representative.
Of course, you, we would bring back anything we discussed to you guys.
Of course.
Make the motion to appoint Brian Day as the Select Board member for the City of Taunton Water Discussions.
Second.
All right, and I, there will be no discussion, um. Roll, please.
Donahue, eye.
Carboni, eye.
Candy, do it.
Do it.
And maybe we bring back on, um, the sixteenth about maybe having a water representative.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and I think LeBaron might want to do a presentation depending on how this meeting goes to.
All right.
Just at one o'clock.
Okay, um, Animal Shelter, um, Agenda Item Number Fourteen. We move this, um, to a future meeting, which is now, um, and for discussion and vote on the renewal of the animal shelter contracts with the towns of Akushna, Berkeley, Bridgewater, Carver, East Bridgewater, Free Town, Halifax, Hanson, Rochester, and Wareham. So there's some data here, uh, that, um, Christina had put together for the past six years of the number of border dogs that have come into Lakeville, um, served by the shelter, because there was a question about the, um, the one-time annual fee that we were charging, and there was a question about the usage from those communities. So this is what, um, was gathered. Because right now, it's twenty-five dollars a day, uh, for the boarding fee, and it's a twenty-dollar, um, drop-off fee for each dog brought into the shelter, and then we had And then we had instituted a, an annual capital fee in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. So that is what the, um, the fee structure is for the animal shelter at this time.
Madam Chair, I was the person that I believe asked for this additional clarification on the document. Um, and the reason I asked is because I think we are substantially underpriced in the services that we're delivering here for other towns. And I'd like to see if the board would have an appetite to increase the prices going forward.
I do.
Okay. And my thought was the capital fee would be, because that's a guarantee.
Yeah, I don't know why we, does anybody know why it was named a capital fee and not just a, like?
Participation fee?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure, but I do know that this is saving the other towns so much time and money and space and, uh, we have the luxury of having an amazing animal shelter in Lakeville that does right by the dogs and cats sometimes, that they bring in and adopt out. Um, but that does come at a fee, and, um, I'm, I'm hoping, um, we can come to a new agreement, um, on maybe the, the wording and, um, the fee amount in order for other towns to participate.
I do think that, that annual capital fee was more for the upkeep of the facility because of the volume coming into the facility. Um, you know, there's, there's more wear and tear on the building.
So I would, I would be amenable to a sliding structure about, you know, how many.
It's gonna be tough to do, because then you're in arrears.
You're always in arrears, for sure, but, um, maybe just increase the price and then increase the drop off fee as well.
I, I, I don't know what's best here, and, I mean, you guys all know my love for enterprise accounts, but this seems like the exact kinda service where you could set that up, where it's all fee based and such. But, um, I mean, as a start, I mean, every one of these towns does not have to maintain the facilities we do, all the additional, um.
Callbacks, everything that we do.
What's the word, not A C O, A A C O?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, even, even moving that fee up to a thousand bucks a year plus drop offs, I mean, seems more than reasonable, considering the capital expenses that they do not have to deal with that we do.
Anybody can make a motion, um, I mean, this is.
Did you, did you have to look more into like daily rates?
So the daily rate here is fifty, and the drop off is four, was it forty or twenty? Twenty for, oh, twenty-five per day, um, and twenty for a drop off fee.
Right.
Um, and then two fifty.
Right, so when you look at.
It's, I don't know what we're calling it, but annual capital fee is probably not the right thing.
When you look at the last page here, it shows you the, the amount, um, from the last, um, from January first, twenty twenty-four through October twenty-eighth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, real time, what was collected, um, based on the volume for those particular areas, so, um.
So the two hundred and fifty dollars is what you're talking about boosting to a thousand?
Yeah.
Because the other thing here, the way the contract's written, I don't like the wording, given that it says annual capital fee, the amount of two fifty, which shall be used to offset expenses related to the repairs and maintenance for the animal shelter.
Mm-hmm.
Or rather that be like our animal control department, because they've got vehicles that we're replacing every few years as well. That we are paying a hundred percent of.
It really narrowed it down to a very small part of the impact. I'd like to get to a thousand, but I'd like to do it in two, two steps.
Yeah. So we can up it to two, we can up it to five hundred now?
Did you motion, did you make a motion?
No.
No, no, I was just throwing a number out the scene.
Yeah.
A step in the right direction.
So I'm, I'm not opposed to, um, offset any expenses related to, um, I, again, legal's gonna have to look at this.
Operations, repair, maintenance, structure, all of those things.
Right, which isn't just for the, the shelter building, but.
But as long as it goes to benefit the animal shelter, um.
Just, you know, all the, all the things that come with animal control in this town.
So what happens is this money will come in, um, and I believe if, if I'm not mistaken, goes into, we'll have to find out through accounting, um, where that two fifty sits, because if there's repairs and maintenance of the building.
Is it revolving fund?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what stands right now.
But I'd like to know that just.
We would have had to have voted that at town meeting, wouldn't we?
This would be like twenty, thirty years ago.
It's probably an old one.
I could just ask Rita.
Let Todd, um, give Michael his list of old accounts.
Right, yeah. But I'd be curious to know that that is what that money is used for, it doesn't become part, you know, it doesn't pay salaries, because that can't, um, but why don't we start with, um, whatever, you know, increment you wanna up it to for now, so that we can get this rolling? And the language to encompass, um, the.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
To increase the annual fee, uh, from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars per each participating town per year. Um, and to change the language to offset expenses related to operations, repair, maintenance, and structure and vehicles, um, for the animal department, or language that would be sufficient in order to encompass everything but salaries. How's that, how's that for a motion, Tracy, sorry about that?
That's fine, and I think.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll have legal.
Second.
Fix it?
Yeah.
Second with legal?
Motion and discussion, there's a motion and a second and discussion, so, yes, let's have legal. Look at that language.
I can wordsmith it.
And, but I think also part of the motion is to move forward, because this will be, um, because I know Tracy has to get these out to, um, these contracts out to the, or the agreements. Um, because this would go into effect from January first, obviously, that's stated in that.
All right, I think that's the only real, is there any other thing in the agreement itself that anyone finds objectionable, or is it just item number two?
I, I did read through it, I didn't.
So we could narrow the scope on what legal looks through and makes a judgment onto just item number two, so they're not rewriting the whole thing?
Yeah, I mean, just to give you an idea. Um, through the last fiscal year, we had roughly, sir, I'm gonna round up, but thirty-seven thousand dollars just in A A C O shifts.
Mm-hmm.
So they're bringing people in, we, if, if other towns are bringing people in, people, dogs, animals, um, off hours and such, it doesn't take much to blow right through that drop off fee and the, I don't think the drop off fee keeps up with the A A C O fees at all. So we're probably running ourselves into a deficit there. I mean, one shift is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for, I think, like a night and weekend shift, a twenty-four hour shift. So if we have one drop off and one of those shifts were, what, negative hundred?
Do they do drop offs in off hours, or?
We're just gonna get clarification, but I assume so.
Yeah, because I know we do pickups in off hours, but I don't know if that we do drop offs in off hours.
I would hope a pickup qualifies as a drop off.
They do do drop offs on other hours, however, the assistant A C Os are paid whether they go out or not.
Regardless?
Regardless, so they could be home all night long and they are paid seventy-five dollars. Um, if they go out, they're paid seventy-five dollars.
Setting some animals free.
And weekend shifts are two hundred dollars for a twenty-four hour shift.
On call, okay.
Okay. Okay, um, just keeping in line to start, yep. All right, roll please.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Aye.
Thank you for entertaining me.
Another fun part.
Okay, now, moving into our annual liquor licenses, okay. So agenda item number fifteen, this is an annual, um, renewal process that we go through, um. The renewal of all filed, that are in front of us, have filed their renewal applications for January first, um, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, I will, I will read through these, um, and this is a vote of the board to approve these renewals.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, the board's gonna need to, um, consider the LeBaron, um, operating company license separate, because it needs a, um, different vote.
And is that in here? Oh, I see it in here under restaurant, all alcohol.
Wait.
Okay, so I'm just gonna leave that one off.
Wait, why, why is LeBaron and not Pecoy and others that are in that category?
Because that's not on the agenda.
So what?
No, it, it just, it's gonna require a separate vote, because there, there is an issue with the transfer of the liquor license. Um, and there's some corporate things, so it, Town Council has recommended a different motion on that license.
Okay, but that's gonna come in front of this, on us on the sixteenth, because I'm not doing that tonight where I don't have information on it. Is there, am I missing something here?
Um, no, Town Council said we could make the motion and approve it, but it has to be a different motion than, than everybody else's.
Okay, well, we don't have the information, um, that would back that up, so, um, we're gonna have to, I, I don't, I know that there was a concern, but I don't know that there's anything of context in this agenda to do that, so, um, I guess if there's a question about one, we're just gonna have to bring it back on the sixteenth.
Okay.
Okay? And I would hope that we have a full explanation as to why, um, that there was this, for the discussion on the sixteenth, that's all. Okay, for the package store and wine and malt, Joe and Chloe Gas, D B A, Joe's Gas, um, fee is seven hundred dollars. Um, package store, all alcohol, Mahat and E Sang Corp, D B A Lakeville Liquors and Market, um, Echo Inc., D B A Muckies Liquors, Kentara Inc., D B A Town Liquor Liquors, and Aravav Liquors Incorporated, D B A Star Liquor Market. Each of those is fifteen hundred dollar fee for a total of six thousand. Restaurant, all alcohol, Pecoy Brook Golf Club L L C, D B A Pecoy Brook Pub, Lakeville Golf Club Inc., D B A Lakeville Golf Club, B Nine Club Inc., D B A The Back Nine Club, Baldi's Lakeville L L C, D B A Baldi's Pizzeria, Ken and L Inc., D B A Saga Sushi. Those are also fifteen hundred dollar fees for each, for a total of, well, now we'll have to take it off for eight, what is it, seven thousand five hundred? Club, all alcohol, Lakeville Fraternal Order of Eagles, Aerie number three nine nine four, a thousand dollars. Total a thousand. General on premise wine and malt, Lakeville, uh, Virtual Entertainment Group Inc., D B A The Broken Tea Virtual Golf Club, seven hundred dollar fee, total seven hundred dollars. General on premise all alcohol beverages, Fifty Eight East Grove Inc., D B A Boston Tavern, Red Hand Brewing Company Inc., D B A Red Hand Brewing, fifteen hundred dollar fee for a total of three thousand dollars. Um, so I guess I made the motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Aye.
Okay, um, they are in the signed folder, um, so if we can get those, um, signed, hopefully this evening before everybody leaves, so that we can get those licenses processed and out.
Yes, and, uh, if people could bring some more restaurants, uh, in town, that'd be great. We need a lot more.
Hear you, hear you. Okay, now are the approval of the annual class one and class two license renewals. Um, we have six class two used car dealers and two class one dealers. They've submitted their renewals, applications for January first, twenty twenty-five, through January first, twenty twenty-six is their expiration, and this would be for all licenses. So the class two license renewals, Chris Altieri, D B A C and E Enterprises, Leonardo Solana, D B A Solana Auto Sales, Andrew's Family Automotive, Linda Burbury and Jason Burry, D B A Elite Auto Sales, and Greigus Automotive Services Inc., Shannick Auto Body and Repairs, David Rose, D B A David, Dave, Dave's Auto. There's a two hundred dollar fee for a total of one thousand two hundred dollars for the total class two renewal fees. Class one license renewals, Russo's Recreation Rentals Inc., Route Forty-four Collision Center R Vs and Boats. They are two hundred dollars for a total of four hundred dollars for the class one, uh, renewal fees. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number seventeen, this is the annual common victulas, victulars of license renewal. Um, at this time, we have three applications that have not been received. I know sometimes we have to knock on some doors, um, so on the sixteenth we'll probably have, um, three additional that we'll have to renew. Uh, so these license renewals will have an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, so I'll include that already in the motion. Um, Baldi's Pizzeria Inc., Royal Pizza, B Nine Club Inc., D B A The Black Nine Club, Pecoy Brook Golf Club L L C, D B A Pecoy Brook Pub, Lakeville Aerie number three nine nine four Fraternal Order of Eagles Inc., Lakeville Golf Club Inc., D B A Lakeville Golf Club, Golf Blues L L C, D B A LeBaron Hill Country Club, Ken and L Inc., D B A Saga Sushi, Sandy L L C, Dunkin' Donuts, J and J's Seafood Drive-In, and M A J J T Properties L L C, D B A Fat Cousins. I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve these annual common victular license.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Oh, we have one more. Agenda number eighteen, um, these are the annual dancing on weekends.
Always makes me feel like Footloose.
Public entertainment on Sundays and coin operated amusement licenses. So there is no dancing unless you have a license on the weekdays. Then I guess I'd be paying fees, because I'm always dancing. Okay, livery license, this expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. J P's Limousine Service, one vehicle, and Luxor Limer, Limo, and Transportation, one vehicle. Dancing on weekdays, this, all of these licenses expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Golf Blues L L C, D B A LeBaron Hills Country Club, Lakeville Golf Club Inc., D B A Lakeville Golf Club, Lakeville Aerie three number, uh, number three nine nine four Fraternal Order of the Eagles Inc., and B Nine Club Inc., D B A Back Nine Club. For coin operated amusements expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Lakeville Aerie number three nine nine four Fraternal Order of the Eagles, they have two machines. Um, there's an Inc. after that. Um, Lakeville Golf Club Inc., D B A Lakeville Golf Club, three machines. And the public entertainment on Sundays, these are for Sundays during twenty twenty-five. Licenses will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Golf Blues L L C, D B A LeBaron Hills Country. Golf Blues LLC, DBA, LaBarren Hills Country Club, Lakeville Golf Club Inc., DBA, Lakeville Golf Club, Lakeville Aerie Number 3994, Fraternal Order of the Eagles Inc., and B9 Club Inc., DBA, Back Nine Club. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I defer to you, but livery licenses were not listed on the Agenda Item.
Oh.
However, they were listed in the list of locations that was on the Agenda.
Look at you pulling that out, okay. So, I think we can vote them in this evening, but we'll bring it back to ratify the vote on the 16th.
Yep.
Got that, Trace? Because I might not remember to bring that up on Agenda Review, so, thank you. Good point.
So moved, otherwise.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, roll please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, we have a request from our police chief requesting that Eric Swenson's appointment be changed from special police officer to a reserve police officer, and this appointment would be, would expire on July 31st, 2025, and effective as of December 2nd, 2024, should this be approved. So there is a memo here from our police chief requesting this change. So I guess I will entertain a motion to change the appointment of Eric Swenson from special police officer to reserve police officer, effective on this vote through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candy, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay, we have our committee updates, I guess we'll go through these, and I believe we do have a small presentation for one of them, so Select Board Policy Subcommittee Updates, anything on, on that, Maureen?
No, we're still planning for the January, for the Select Board Policy Subcommittee.
Excellent. Fire Station Building Committee, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to talk about our next steps, to prepare for the ballot election on January 28th, so we will be holding another meeting next week, next Wednesday, to talk about that, and we encourage, you know, if anybody has any questions, to please, you know, come to the meeting, but we will also be doing a lot of public outreach. We have our scheduling, which I'll bring back on the 16th, a date in January, very similar to what we did before Town Meeting, where we had a, just kind of an open house event at the library, where residents could come in, they could see the plans, they could ask the questions of the Subcommittee, as well as Police, Fire Chief, and Representatives of the Fire Police Department. I keep saying police, it's fire, because we're in the Police Department, and so that people can have an educated vote when they get to the ballots on the 28th, so we will be doing some more public outreach. I guess I'll go through these others, and then we'll go back to...
Can I make a suggestion or comment about the presentation?
If you wouldn't mind just coming up here real quick, John? Because I know you attend our meetings, so I do appreciate that.
Well, the, the, one of the, watching the video of the architect's presentation October a year ago, one thing that struck me about Socio Associates is that they said they would be happy to, eager to present energy-saving ideas in a public forum to the town, while looking at the budget in the, 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 the meeting, public meeting, November 12th, there wasn't any discussion in the chief's presentation about that topic. I'm, and I'll bring this up next Wednesday, so just right now, we've got about almost 1.5 million going to the architect, but they haven't performed one of the services they said they would do in their presentation, so let's have them do that presentation as a public outreach. For instance, the example is the Newbury Port Fire Station sent you the injury, energy report October a year ago. That particular town, they had an energy calculation of about 86,000 kilowatts the station would need, and they put solar panels, photovoltaic panels on the roof, 127,000 kilowatts. The station's gonna make energy for the town and sell that energy. We could, I'd like to know if we could do the same thing in our town and put a ballot out to the taxpayers, would you be, would, do you want the station to cost the town utility bills over the life of the station, or you want to know how much it would cost to, to have the panels to, to make the station an asset? That's my request, I'll make it again Wednesday.
Right, no, and you can absolutely do that, but I'd like to just, you know, just say for the record, that, you know, your point is well-taken, because, you know, energy is always a conversation, you know, globally for, for everybody concerned, and when you're starting a new, a building initiative, you want to make sure that that's part of the conversation. So yes, Socio, you know, did have that through their presentation, that they are very, I guess, well-versed in energy savings. So those conversations, I know the, the Fire Station Building Committee itself is very focused on making sure that this, you know, this build, this project is one that is representative and respectful to that initiative, as well as the residents. So there is further discussion, so yes, Town Meeting voted a budget amount that we could borrow up to.
Right.
We have to go through the ballot vote, so should it pass at the ballot, there would be additional conversations that would be taking place at future meetings as we work the project out, that would cause that reduction in additional, you know, costs, I guess, which would make, reduce the cost of the overall project. So, just so that you know, your concerns are, are very well-received and heard, and yes, please bring them to the meeting next week.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Through you.
What date was that meeting that you're referencing a year ago for the Fire Station Building Committee?
Well, it's a town meeting, I believe it was November 12th.
No, you had said that, you had said that Socio and Associates had made a...
It's sometime in October of 2023.
Yeah, it's one of my...
I have it in my, on my laptop, in my notes, I've downloaded, saved the Lake Cam recording. The presentation slides were not made available to the public. I wish they were on the committee's page, but to the point of the vote on, on the bond, before the town votes, I'd like to know if there's any contingency dollars, or, we got 21,400,000, and there's a certain dollar amount in the budget, the draft budget, is, so what would this, this, I mean, I've already, using the solar system calculator used by Newbury Port, with the length and width of the building, it, it would calculate, calculates out over 237,000 kilowatts per year that solar panels would generate, and that might be higher with, with more, higher-rated panels, so is there, how, how much would that cost, and is it running in the budget to put that in now? Because the, the, the project manager says, well, it's, it's solar-ready, to put solar in later. Well, you know that's never gonna happen, because the town's not gonna go get the money at, when we bite the bullet for 21,400, so bring that detail out now, before the vote, if at all possible. So, thank you for your time.
Please come to the meeting.
I will, I was there last time, and, you know, you know, I sat and listened, and after having seen...
But I will make, I will make mention that you will be attending the meeting with a question on that, John. Thank you very much. Okay, IT?
Nothing yet, since I think the last meeting, we had the last three members appointed, so thank you for naming me to that, so, I do hope to reach out, they're all eager, so there's been emails back and forth, we're all really chomping at the bit to get going, which is nice. Related to this, there has been the ongoing cybersecurity assessment going on by Cyber Trust of Massachusetts, that Plymouth County paid for, that we approved, and probably within the next month or so, they'll have that report finalized, so I'm sure this committee would love to take a look at that. Bob McNally from Green Rivers has been pivotal in answering all their various questions on different control methods we have, they've got a device in place, I believe, still right now, doing simulated attacks and stuff to see how well we're doing, so it should be a pretty interesting report, probably this month they might have, I don't know if we'll present it this month or so, but somewhere in the near future, I guess.
Might need to be an executive session.
Yes, yeah, so, due to the security aspects, so we'll probably have to...
Smart.
Give it, give an overview of the process, and then talk about it in executive session, but now that we got the full complement of the board, we'll reach out and get something scheduled, at least to have an introduction.
Kind of exciting, okay. Communication and Community Outreach Subcommittee? I know, friend of ours, how we doing on that?
We'll have something next week.
Okay, excellent, but also included in here, as you mentioned in your, your Town Administrator Report, you're working on a, like, town...
Townwide newsletter, yeah, that would kind of have elements of the COAs, the libraries, the HR one, it would, it'd kind of be like a community-facing, we'd print them out and put them at different locations in town, so people could pick them up. It's, it's gonna be a different look to it every month, as we're navigating it, I thought it'd be a good idea for the Subcommittee to kind of, maybe, take on that, because, I mean, it's a decent look to it, I'd like it to look a little snazzier, and I think...
Snazzy's her middle name. Because I do know that, I think where you're going with this too, that, you know, I'm constantly looking at other municipalities, especially when, you know, news feed comes through about how they're doing a presentation, or how they're, you know, the content of the information that they're sending out to their, to their residents, and, you know, I'm always saving it, screenshotting it, you know, and bringing it back, and, and I think that this is, this is great, especially before we get to like a, an annual town meeting or a special town meeting, that this information can get out, and this is a once-a-month, do we know if this will be something that we can receive on the, like, the first of the month, for the month previous, or going forward, or like, what is your thought process?
First of the month, basically looks back a month, and it looks forward a month.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will this get to whomever? Will this get sent out when you check off that you'd like boards and committees?
That's our goal.
Yeah.
That's one medium, front page, new, social media, WACI, as I just mentioned, Print Out 50, from at the library, Print Out 50, Council on Aging, different locations, and it's obviously gonna, like I said, it's gonna look different as we kind of spruce it up, and there'll be special editions, Town Meeting, it'll look different every month, is basically...
Madam Chair, an interesting thought, just staring at my presentation, what's coming next, is Old Colony has a really good graphics art program.
They do.
That might be an interesting thing to reach out to, and kind of say, hey, give the kids a project, give us some ideas.
Yeah, no, I know Tracy and I, back, back in the day, we ran into the thing where they couldn't produce the town books for us, and we were actually looking at them to produce...
Oh, wow.
The, the books. Town boards, yeah.
Some of the stuff I've seen in tours there, they've made is really impressive, so, you know, that avenue for ideas.
You know, and the key is that, you know, where are you getting your content, so you're looking at your town, you know, departments to provide, you know, some content, but there's activity that's happening in your boards, committees, and commissions that, you know, might be up and coming, so it's about, it's a, it's a change of behavior, is what it is. So when you start a new initiative, and you're looking to people to participate, and it just might be a, a quick, hey, just send a quick email, but unless it becomes part of their behavior, they might not be thinking of, hey, this is a big initiative happening in this, you know, arena, you know, this might be good to get out to everybody, so it's just, you know, changing our, our ways, just a little bit, so I think this is exciting. It's definitely a, you know, move into the direction that you have been so passionate about right along, so...
I think it'd be something we'd run by the Subcommittee before we post it, just for ideas in the future, and...
Sweet. And then Citizens Academy, I think we mentioned at the last meeting that we, we probably have something, we'll get together in January, once things settle down, and then we'll start to put something together. And then, yeah, we have more information to come. So at this time, Brian, who is our delegate to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical Building Committee, has missed a couple of meetings with the Select Board because there's been, you know, the same conflict with, with our meetings and theirs, so, and to have the representat, representation there is very important. So Brian had asked if he could give us a, a brief update, presentation on it, and I thought it would be really good, so... I will move again.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board, for the permission slips to go and attend these, since they do conflict quite a bit with us. The Old Colony School Building Committee is tough to get dates that work, because there's 20-something people that attend each of these meetings. Just so you know, Lakeville's representation on that building committee is Debbie Quinn, Bob Marshall, Chris Planca, and myself, Brian Day, so we have a pretty good representation. I think we actually have one more person than other towns, so I guess we got a little headroom there. A few town meetings ago, there was a feasibility study approved, where the district members for Old Colony approved at their various town meetings, I believe it was $500,000 for feasibility study on what to do with the existing building, and Old Colony also chipped in their own $500,000 for a total of about $1 million for this study. And where we're currently at is, we've been going through various options, site locations, enrollment counts, addition, renovation versus new construction, trying to figure out what fits inside of Old Colony's vision, as well as what fits inside what the district members might be capable of supporting in the future. So, right now, we're kind of here at step three in the MSBA process, which is quite a long process. We will soon be transitioning into what's called schematic design, step four, so I'll come back to what a timeline is a little later, but we're currently in step three of eight. So, to get right into some details, over the past few meetings, we've had some really important votes, and I can get into why these votes were taken the way that they were. So in the middle here, you see enrollment comparison of things that we've been going through. 560 students is the current enrollment of the school, they currently are lacking, for what's to be considered a full construction school, they're currently lacking HVAC and plumbing as two Chapter 74 programs. So we were given five different options that MSBA said that we could look at. 560 gives us no growth in students and no growth in, in programs, as you make your way down, you can see that there's differences in what the school would gain in additional, what additional programs they might gain as well. So back in September 16th, the school committee, the school building committee did eliminate three options from the table. We eliminated the 560, because that's the current enrollment, and it just didn't feel right that if the, if the district potentially went through with this project, to just end up with status quo. 620 would quote-unquote "right-size" the programs by growing culinary to 68, the other programs would have some shifts, but there would be no addition to any of the programs themselves, they would still remain not a full construction school. 728 students was the first time that they get the full construction status, you can also see their culinary and electrical programs grow a little bit, and this also would get them a right-sized physical building, so I might get these numbers slightly wrong, but the current building is somewhere around 104,000 square feet, and even to build a building for the same enrollment and programs today, that school would have to be around 220,000 square feet. Their rooms are significantly undersized for what MSBA requires today for a current school. 776 students would add dental as an additional program, you can see that there's still growths in the other programs, and 810 would have potentially added biotech, that was a kind of on-the-fence, could have been biotech, could have been something else, so that would have been four programs total. Now, why some of these are eliminated, 560, as I mentioned, no growth, and chapter, sorry, enrollment or programs, 620, no growth, 728 and 776 were the two that were voted for to be considered because of the fact that they did add new programs to the school. Seven twenty-eight and seven seventy-six were the two that were voted for to be considered because of the fact that they did add new programs to the school. On November eighteenth, you can see that there was additional votes taken to nominate the seven hundred and seventy-six students as the preferred solution recommendation through new construction, and I'll get into why. The additional program being dental was that the school is trying to be more equitable in how the programs that are available. And what they see is HVAC and plumbing, they, you know, kind of forecast that those will probably, as shown in other schools, likely trend more towards male enrollment and they're trying to be more equitable with what they have. And dental hygiene tends to be more female enrollment from what they've seen statistically. So that would help to balance the school a little more. They're also seeing currently about a hundred and sixty applications they have to decline every single year, even without these additional programs. So without HVAC, without plumbing, without dental, they're still turning away more than fifty percent of their applicants per year. One quick note was, I'm not talking dollars, but percentage wise, the differential in the very early estimates, these are not solid figures by any means, but the early estimates were shifting from seven hundred and twenty-eight to seven hundred and seventy-six students was about three per, three point one percent more as far as project goes. And there's, there's difference on operational as well, I'll show later, but that was the lift to go from seven seventy-six, seven twenty-eight to seven seventy-six. Many, many discussions on adrenno versus new construction. I'll read these kind of line by line, so to go, the addition slash renovation option for seven hundred and twenty-eight units costs twenty percent more than new construction for the same number of students. And it costs eighteen percent more for the new construction option of seven hundred and seventy-six students. Also adds about two to two and a half years of additional time due to the fact that now you are working around the children. So, you know, especially during the school year, you can't work while they're in school, you have to minimize it. There's going to be different phases of construction where they finish one part of the building, now they gotta move the kids, then tear down another part of the building, finish one, move more kids. And the architect actually said they've seen situations where they may have to move students off-site entirely, depending on what phase of construction is happening, then bring them back later. The costs are more in the contingency and the onsite management of the program due to the fact that it takes so much longer. And where you're doing renovation, it's one of those, you don't quite know what you're gonna find until you start digging in. So they do their best estimates, but you never know what you're gonna find, so you open up the walls. Seven seventy-six adrenno was eleven percent more than new construction of seven twenty-eight and nine percent more than new construction of seven seventy-six, with the same kind of timeline adjustments and other requirements on the side. So the building committee felt that, given the fact that just about every adrenno option was way more expensive than new construction and the additional impact to students, you know, over closer to five, five and a half years than perhaps closer to three years, it just wouldn't be fair to the students to drag that out that much longer as well as spend that much more money.
Brian, just a quick question on that.
Sure.
So the first line is the addition. The second line is the renno.
Yeah, let me see if this little laser pointer thing here works. So this here, the adrenno option is in this column. So we're saying that for the seven hundred and twenty-eight students and the adrenno option costs twenty percent more than new construction for seven twenty-eight and eighteen percent more than new construction for seven seventy-six. And then the adrenno option for seven seventy-six, they're expecting to cost about eleven percent more than new construction for seven twenty-eight and nine percent more than new construction for seven seventy-six.
Does that factor in demolition and removals?
Yes, so interesting question. What we learned was that if you are, if you are building on the same site, which they have a very large parcel of land there, if you're building on the same site, then demolition becomes an eligible budget expense through MSBA. If they were to say, no, we're gonna move this school to another town, then all the demo costs, you can't get any money from the state for that. And then you end up with this old building that's empty, you gotta still cool it, heat it, and then figure out demo on its own or repurpose it. So by staying in that comp, campus that they're on today, demo costs, even if you go to new construction, demo costs of the existing are factored into the project. You're welcome. So some key dates before showing you some concepts that we were shown. The next school committee meeting is December ninth at six thirty in the Old Colony Library. Highly suggest anybody interested in this project attends, this is a significant cost project. I'm not talking dollars here, but there's a lot of digits in the number. And really, this is the best place to ask those questions. The architects can give you much more detailed information. They're not, they don't feel they're gonna be comfortable with numbers until roughly August of next year because that's the end of their schematic design, just like we saw for the fire station. It took a lot of work to get through that schematic design before we tightened up the numbers to say, okay, this is what we want to start going out with and talking about. But these are very large numbers. So we will meet on the ninth, that is when we will vote to allow the architect and the OPM to submit their preferred schematic reports submission to the MSBA. Between that time and the end of February, the MSBA will be going back and forth with the project team over the schematic design. If they've got questions, it'll answer back. Hopefully by the end of February, they have approved that preferred schematic report and tell us to go into schematic design work phase, which goes through roughly the end of October. Which brings us to a couple of really, really key things. The school committee for Old Colony has to decide on a funding process and I've got more on that later. And then back in Oc- in October twenty twenty-five, that's when MSBA should come to a budget agreement on, yes, we, we do feel your schematic design is gonna roughly cost X. Then sometime in the fall, they're estimating November, December, they'd be coming to the districts for project approval and vote on funding. So I know this stretches out to the end of next calendar year, but there is gonna be a lot going on behind the scenes. I really do encourage people, we've had basically no attendance in any of these meetings. They're all public meetings, they're all posted on Old Colony's page. Come ask questions, see what's going on. I really do encourage people to come see this. So the schematic design hasn't started yet, the schematic design itself doesn't start till next year. It needs to get MSBA approval first, but everything here that I'm showing you, these are all public documents that you could, I don't know if they're posted yet to the Old Colony webpage, but the administration office has all of them for sure. So I'll, I'll find out and find out later if they've posted them to the page.
I just wanted to say, I think it'd be handy if, even though we don't have to post those meetings for the town of Lakeville, I think those meetings should be posted on the calendar for the town of Lakeville.
Yeah, I'm not against it if we can.
Yeah, I think, you know, for visibility and anyone interested, I, I think that should be a parcel of our communication strategy.
Makes sense. This is just an overhead of the existing site, so this is what they have today. Not shown are some interesting things where it's really hard to see, but there is a dotted line right here, which I believe is their wellhead protection area. They've got a very, very, very old well there today that they're actually very much in fear of failing. There is a private cemetery down in this area and these are vernal pools that are on the property today. So there's a lot of spaces you can't go, it's just, it's too tight. There was a site discussion where one option was to build up here in the athletic fields. However, reconstruction of athletic fields would not be in the allowed project budget by MSBA, so we would have to come up with those funds. What you'll see in the next ones, I don't have an overlap, but the new building, it actually, now, Old Colony is a single-story building today. A new one would be at least two floors, so you actually get a smaller footprint, so it's kind of in this area here. This yellow line is a very large natural gas easement. But the hope is that Middleborough Water is going to bring water along this easement into the school so that they can abandon that well and they'll probably retain this well for irrigation purposes, but no longer need it for drinking water. So.
Looks like it overlays a road which.
Yep.
In that North Avenue.
North Ave is kind of like up here. Yeah, it's hard to see, it says Mirth Ave right there. And this is the, the current entrance that actually goes over the gas easement. So the site plan for new construction, these are very much conceptual. The schematic design would flush out what it actually looked like, but just to give you an idea, the existing school, kind of, if you think about, okay, here's, here's the middle where the laser pointer is, here's where it used to be, so kind of where these parking lots are now. The concept is that, again, all, all conceptual at this point, main entry remains the same. Potentially a second bus entry on North Ave to split the traffic types so that, you can see here, these blue Chevron's, this would be bus traffic. And the reason they want to come in this way is because that puts the door and the bus right up against the school. So the kids can just get right off and then they have their own bus parking down here because they, they maintain all their buses. Whereas if the buses continue to come in here, then they'd have to wrap around the backside or come around the loop with all the traffic to get the door on the right side. Go the proper side towards the school. Service traffic is kind of important to them because they have a lot of services that they either do today or looking to expand access to the public. So their culinary services, cosmetology services, perhaps the dental hygiene services. They all want these to be easily accessed by the public so they can come in and kind of park in this area here. Or if you're coming down here, their construction wing, which I'll talk more about, they've got lots of trucks coming in with lumber and piping and automobiles and all sorts of things that day in, day out, the classrooms down here, the shops down here are working on. Again, conceptual, they're kind of creating this central courtyard. The auditorium size, if I remember right, the MSBA allows funding up to two-thirds of the enrollment size. So at the seven seventy-six layer, uh, level, that would be four hundred and six seats. For comparison, the Assawamset Auditorium is four hundred and fifty seats, so it's pretty comparable. The school district could elect to put more money into it, but would have to come out of the district share, MSBA wouldn't give you more. Pontiquet, sorry, that'd be pretty big for Assawamset. You didn't see the hidden auditorium there?
I guess not.
So what they've done is created a courtyard where most of the shops all kind of face out to the same area where that service road was. The reason they have carpentry here at the moment is that carpentry is usually building sets for stage productions, so they'd be right next to them. Second floor, you've got lots of, lots of more technology oriented things and then these are your classrooms across the way. The scale is down here, these classrooms are something like forty by forty, they look tiny because the shops themselves are so huge. So they do look minuscule compared to the shops. Central office is your superintendent's office. Administration is what most people think of as central office, like when you first walk into the building. There was a lot of discussion on just the naming of these things during the last meeting. Then there's close-ups on them, just to give you a better idea. So these are exact same as the last ones, just bigger. And these are, they look like they're closed off because the shops are open to the second floor in this case here. The other thing that we've been talking to Old Colony's administration about is it's not just about potentially renovating or building the school, it's what's the cost to operate it. So these are early estimates projected out to the year twenty thirty. These are the total figure, they're not what Lakeville's share would be and they do not include any short or long-term debt. So long-term debt being the project itself is not included in these numbers here. At current enrollment, five hundred and sixty students, you know, if they go out to the year twenty thirty, about a hundred and eleven staff. If you go up to the seven hundred and twenty-eight options, about a hundred and forty-five staff. If you go up to seven seventy-six, it's only an increase of four, four more staff members there. So kind of the subtotal down here, you can see what it goes up from the five sixty, it's about twenty-nine percent gain and a seven twenty, it's about two point four percent gain. The enrollments would not go from like five sixty, one school year to seven seventy-two, eight twenty-eight or seven seventy-six the next school year. They have to gradually bring in students to those new programs over a number of years, which is yet to be determined. So you wouldn't see a budget jump from like this to that in one year, it would be a gradual increase over a number of years that the, the five different member towns would all share. How do we get to that? Essentially, this is a summary, the school dis- the school committee for Old Colony has two options, option D and option N. Option D would be that they give notice to member communities and then within sixty days, each member community has to hold a town meeting to express disapproval of the project, not approval of the project, disapproval. So if a town just didn't hold a town meeting, then that is essentially approval of the project for that town. So then, in this case, if any town votes it down, right, expresses disapproval via town meeting, the project does not move forward. It's done there. If every member town, this sounds negative, right, does not vote disapproval, so essentially approval from all towns, then the project would move forward, but then every town would have to go through a funding mechanism to figure out how to fund it. Right, so for us, likely a dead exclusion of some kind, but if there was a town that, you know, could wrap this into their yearly budget, great, good for them. The other option is option N. Option N is the school committee essentially issues an election warrant that says on one day, for the same number of hours, every town votes. And it's just majority vote. So even if one town's majority says no, but the culmination of all towns says yes, then the project moves forward. Still, at that point, each town has to individually figure out a funding mechanism. So if they need a dead exclusion, two-step process, go to town meeting, just like, you know, we're doing now for the fire station as an example, vote at a town meeting and then vote at the ballot.
I s- I assume they probably don't, but do they help us fund any of these?
Yes, so if they went with this second option, Old Colony is on the hook for funding the election. Not for town meetings, but for the elections. Unless they're being charitable perhaps. That's all I have, except we do have the league lease in here, if anybody is interested in that. One interesting thing here, which the project team told us, this is the first, I think they've ever seen it, is it on this one? It's back here, is that ninety percent of the capital costs, right, is determined by the ratio of the town's enrollment in Old Colony. The other ten percent, however, is a portion on the basis of enrollment, all public, private and parochial schools from that town. Right, so that last ten percent is just all of your student population added up, you pay a percentage based on that. And the way that they explained it to me, and I might not do a good job of it, so again, come on December ninth, the next building committee meeting to ask, is that this essentially gives bigger towns that might send more students as a result, a little more skin in the game. Because a smaller town doesn't have as many pupils to draw from all these other locations to then send to a potentially bigger school. I think that's all I've got, here's the other nitty-gritty from MGL on the methods, if anybody really wants them. So I appreciate taking the time, I know it's a lot of information in a short amount, the actual presentation was much longer. But there's a lot here and it's, the wheels are really starting to turn. So I'm hoping people get more involved and start asking more questions and, you know, see what this opportunity could be.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I forwarded the full one, I'll send the shorter one out as well.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. The water line would be part of this project and if they do that, they actually have to get that built and in place before anything starts. So yes, yeah, however, even if this project fails, they want that anyways because there is a lot of concern over the well itself. The well and the well equipment is from like World War Two.
Okay, all right, moving along, any new business coming in front of the board? Old business.
Yeah, just one after project update, just due to the timing of it and I wasn't comfortable with the procurement of it. The fiber project is gonna be going forward as the original plan, which was to hang it on poles.
So it won't be going alongside?
Won't be going alongside the water line and the trench. We got the change order, it was about sixty thousand, which was a lot of money. And I didn't really think it was really tied to the original water line project, so I thought it was a little.
Andrew, I'll go, I'll go rent a ditch witch at New England Rental, walk out there, they can lay the fiber, we did it for Middleborough.
Oh, really?
Yep, we went out, uh, the Middleborough Cable Committee and we all went out for three days and in our mucklucks and.
That's how most of T.
That's how most of T M L P's fiber was made in Lakeville. You turn around with a ditch witch.
It's the only reason I know the word, a ditch witch.
Yeah, it's just, like a lot of these ARPA projects, it's just so last second. Just there wasn't a whole lot of leeway to
Makes sense.
Do a lot of it. That's the only really ARPA one I have.
So what are we gonna do?
We're just gonna hang it on the poles.
Oh, hang it on the poles, okay.
Yeah, so G N E hangs the poles and then T M L, yeah, they take the fiber from T M L P and hang it.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question for the town administrator. You had mentioned there was a surplus on the light project. Did I write that down correctly? Which project for ARPA did we not spend the whole amount? What was it, lights? Was it security?
The cameras.
The cameras.
Yeah, we, I think we said like twenty four, twenty eight, making it fourteen.
Yeah, they gotta do the trenching costs and they might add a camera.
Would it be out of scope to include more cameras in order to maximize the ARPA return there? Like, just to do something in order for us either to get more equipment or more actual coverage for us to maximize that and not give any money back?
Yeah, it probably just couldn't be more than twenty five percent of that original amount, but I think they could do.
Oh, because we don't want to, there's a delta right now, right? So this'll, I don't know how much it is, but we don't want to send it back, so can we just figure out if there's some cameras?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mike Smith came in today and told me, and I think he was investigating how much he could do it for, so. Yeah, we'll find out.
All right, yeah, whatever we can do, please. Thank you. All right, and our charging stations?
Yeah, so I believe it was April of twenty three, they were gonna put in four, two stations in each location, Ted Williams Camp over here, and then also at the town hall. Someone mentioned it to me like my first week, so I asked G N E, what's the status of it? They said since they hadn't heard back, I think Bob just kind of laid it just to the side, and the funding went away. So I reached out to G N E and they said they could reapply for the project. And so I kind of wanted to bring it back and see what the interest level is.
Did they come to us?
They did. They approached us.
Yeah, right. They, and then they applied for, they got, I think, fifty thousand for each location. And then they, I think they brought license agreements to you guys to approve. But at that point, there wasn't like a go ahead. You had to complete the project by a certain date.
Correct. So when we voted and signed off?
We did.
That's weak if we didn't.
No, we did.
Yeah, because we had a
We voted.
We had a big discussion on
We brought the parks in for the discussion because it affected them.
When, when would this have been?
This was, that discussion was April, May of twenty three. I think what they had said is Ari was kind of in transition out. And so I think when he left, there was a
Six months prior?
Yes, I just don't think they, they just didn't put it out in time, so.
They didn't put it out.
I don't know if there was like a, I think they pointed them, they just didn't put it out in time. I thought, I thought they said the town just didn't proceed with it.
Because we had the person here, and we talked about what level chargers there'd be, if they're pavement or not. I thought that moved forward.
Record, we should be getting that done. I do have some current concerns now that Red Hand Brewery is gonna be next to the town hall to vote. What's the status on, on how that gets used and stuff, because there's actual people there at night now parking in town hall to go over to Red Hand, et cetera, et cetera. But yeah, that's unfortunate.
And speaking of which, because we're now speaking of old business, I guess we can bring it up. There was part of that, gosh, two years ago, when, or maybe it was a year ago, when Red Hand Brewery was coming, they, you know, there was an appetite from the board to make sure that they had no parking signs on town property. And I believe they approached the office to find out what type of signs, how big, because they, you know, they want to make sure that they, you know, uphold their end of the bargain. So I know that they wanted to move this forward, but I don't know wherever, where it ended up. So if there's decisions that need to be made on our end, I don't want it to go into the abyss like the charging stations. Let's bring it to the board and let's make decisions and
Yeah, because naturally, people are parking.
Yeah, so, I mean,
Just, it is what it is.
So, but that, you know, I just wanted to make sure we pay attention to that, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it just in case
Thank you.
A difference in opinion, twenty three to now and
No, no.
Speaking of signs, I forget where we left off on our right to farm signs now that
Yes, that, it's on me. Christina, you know, is back in the office, and I think they had sent some, like how many they needed, you know, kind of where it was going to be located. And they, I guess it was the the committee. Agrocoltrank, you, was, they picked which one that they liked. So now it's a matter of funding and so. Now that Andrew is here, I can bring it to Andrew and, you know, we can get that moving, so. But yes.
It's been a long time in the making.
But yes, it was, you know, it's when you have volunteer, you know, people are working within, you know, timeframes. So that's why, you know, having, you know, a staff person, you know, supporting the initiatives of those boards committees and commissions is very helpful.
Speaking of a long time, where is the open space plan?
Yes.
Do we know where that is? That's only four years late.
Yes, I think Lisa Cordero was close to finishing, correct?
The revisions have not been made. She was waiting for information on the appendices and some of the lists and the maps. Some of the maps were unreadable. So I have reached out to Serped with Madam Chair's approval. And we're gonna use our assistance hours to get the maps that are not readable made again. And there's also some things in the appendices that are not readable. There is a flora fauna list that is so blurry, you can't make it out.
So it's a copy of a copy of a copy?
Yes, we're trying to locate where that came from. Not having much left, but we are, we're working on it. So the revisions are all done, and Serped has the maps. And they said that they will insert the maps into the text where they need to go. So just kind of wait and hear back from them on where they are.
Madam Chair, I've got a comment on it. I've made it before, but again, you know, dead horse. Serped could have done this for us in, using our Serped hours, and this could have been done in the matter of a few months. And it should have been done in a matter of a few months. Everyone's done a great job putting it together, but every time some, a board changes or a person changes, there's more additions. And it's, having something four years out of date is just unacceptable. And it's precluding us from going from, for grants for the parks. Well, thank goodness, we've been able to fund them through ARPA means, but for the parks and conservation and recreation. And we should always be identifying quicker ways to get things done if we're in some, some type of situation like that again. I'm just very disappointed that this has lingered on.
So you had mentioned that you were going to be working on some kind of like tracking system for when things are due, when things are coming up. So with like the master plan implementation committee, they know that, you know, this, this master plan's good for, you know, X amount of time. And that by the time it expires, you should be starting to work on it now. So the same thing, once we have our open space plan,
It's seven years.
Let's make sure that, you know, we know that we have a seven year date that it expires or that we'd have to renew it and when we would start that renewal process. So it doesn't get lost in transition. Like, we've got the M V P, which is the, you know, municipal vulnerabilities preparedness, you know, designation, the green communities designation, hazard mitigation. All of that, all of those give us a better, well, give us a standing to receive funding, whether it's on a federal level or on a local level. And if we don't have those designations, we are not eligible for that. And I think that this board has spoken numerous times, and I think we're loudly, you know, we'll have our little banners. But this is really important to us to make sure that we keep it. So if you can come up with that system, so that
There's another example, Madam Chair. I think we got it just in the nick of time, the forty S evidence we needed to submit this year.
Thank you.
Last year was seven hundred grand. Like, we were that close to being late, and if the state was like, too bad, so sad, I don't know what we'd do budget wise.
And so we, I think, through our conversations with positions that we would be hiring, that that designation was gonna, you know, stay, I think, within the town administrator and planning to make sure, because I think it's, it's critical to our revenue.
Yeah, and it's not like it came at a different time.
No, no.
It's the same, it's same every year.
September, right? September?
Start getting it together in June, and then you're done with it in September.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just looked it up while we were chatting. We voted on the chargers on September fifth, twenty twenty three. I don't know what happened.
So it just never went?
Do you have the vote?
Yep, a member made by you, seconded by member Fabian, unanimous that the town of Lakeville enter into a license agreement with M G N E regarding installation and operation of electrical, electric vehicle supply equipment in Lakeville, unanimous in favor.
If I remember correctly, it was those, the gentleman was going to be making sure that the licenses got put together to come back, so.
What gentleman from M G N E?
Yep.
And there's even, I already forwarded them to Andrew, but there was even like a license drawn up.
Yep.
So I don't know what happened.
Okay. Well, we lost the window.
Yeah. Unfortunate. Let's open a new one.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else for old business? Give us some time, we'll think of a bunch of things.
I had one question, if I may?
Yes.
Under old, I meant to ask earlier during Andrew's report, I'm sorry. I saw the parking lot is going out to bid soon, but would that construction be next year for paving, or will they still try to do it?
It would go to bid this winter, but then it wouldn't start till this spring.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, next select board meeting. Get your calendars out, please. Monday, December sixteenth at five thirty P M here at the Lakeville Police Station.
Madam Chair, I will not be able to attend. Unacceptable.
I'm sorry to hear that.
You have to come ratify the livery vote, I'm sorry.
Right.
Old business, ratification.
Would you just send me a reminder, though?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have correspondence. I think, because this is part of the packet, I'm not gonna, you know, go too deep into this, but there's letters from the town of Medway. Oh, okay, I guess we can, all right, I'm gonna read these. For the record, this is from the town of Medway, Commonwealth Massachusetts, from the town manager's office. Dear Chair Parsons Carbone and members of the board, I am writing to express my sincere gratitude to the town of Lakeville for providing us with the outstanding assistance of Fire Chief Michael O'Brien during our deputy fire chief interviews here in Medway yesterday. This letter was dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty four. His professionalism, leadership, and support were invaluable throughout the process. Chief O'Brien's incredible experience in and understanding of the fire service and his ability to offer insightful perspectives greatly contributed to the success of the interviews. Please know that I truly appreciate the time and effort he devoted to ensuring that we are in the best place to select the best candidate for our open position. Please extend my thanks to Chief O'Brien. On behalf of all of us involved in the interviews, it was a pleasure working with him, and his involvement truly made a difference in our decision-making process. Thank you again. And if I may ever be of assistance to you and your team, please do not hesitate to say the words. Sincerely, Michael Boynton, Town Manager.
That's such a nice letter.
That was very nice.
Thank you, Chief O'Brien.
Thank you, Chief O'Brien. And the Buzzards Bay Coalition, this came into, Andrew, you mentioned it, this is a holiday tree, holiday tree gift. Letter dated November fifteenth. Last winter, the Buzzards Bay Coalition acquired the Douglas Family's Christmas Tree Farm on Schenectady
Close enough.
Net. I'm really bad at this, so Fairhaven, I just said real fast. In Fairhaven, as part of its efforts to safeguard water quality and coastal habitats in the face of sea level rise, preserve the scenic beauty of the neck, I like that, the neck, and preserve farmland. This holiday season, we are offering the gift of a large tree from the farm to the twenty towns in our Buzzards Bay watershed. We are happy to arrange a time for your D P W crew to visit the farm, to pick out a tree, cut it down, and bring it home for the public to enjoy. Thank you, and Mark Rasmussen, the president of the Buzzards Bay Coalition. So that was very, that was great, so. All right, we have some information here on New Tech tries to catastrophe proof your home. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read through that. I have to be honest, I did not get a chance to read through the entire piece of it, but I will continue to do so. So there's some information that was shared with us, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Gregory a question?
Yes.
Are you on the technology, on the Energy Advisory Committee?
No, he's not, although a letter has been submitted of interest. The Energy Advisory Committee, we're working to schedule a meeting. There's some things, some topics that I think would be relevant. We have to reorganize, we have to appoint a new member, and we get some updates that we need to address, so.
Very good. I think you would be a great candidate for the Energy Advisory Committee.
So John, I'm, because we don't really have public participation, but I know if you wouldn't mind in the future, if you can attach a cover letter with this and saying, please at your leisure, read this, and I would like to at least have a conversation with the select board. Because I can't get into too much detail so that it doesn't get out of, you know, open meeting law, but yes.
So Andrew had mentioned a new email address, and I sent an email to that address, selectboard@lakevillema.org. And a follow up with Tracy, and it was marked, so did you all get that email?
Did we fix that?
Yeah, we fixed that.
Good.
But did you get the email? Because in there it asked
Yes.
Please, I reviewed the hazard mitigation plan, pulled that down after reading this article. And it was struck that the plan, which this article, this article speaks about extreme weather through climate change, and so does our plan. And the plan didn't mention this passive house housing concept. So my question in the email was, would it be, seems to be of value to modify the plan to include this passive house concept as a starting point.
Okay.
So that's the action at this late hour.
Right, no, but I think that, you know, because I had mentioned the hazardous mitigation plan before, I believe our fire chief is the person that
You are correct.
Diligently to make sure that we did have that designation and have that plan in place so that we could receive federal funding options. So I would, I'd have to defer to him, because I know it's been a couple of years, and I don't know how often you have to renew that plan. But, and he's probably watching and probably messaging us right now. I would definitely check with him, but I think that any way that we can, because there was input that was solicited through the municipal vulnerabilities preparedness program designation that met the requirements for the hazardous mitigation. But I think going forward, these are the types of things that we want to hear, that we can build into that, that plan, because they arise, like new things come up and about that could impact.
Well, passive house has been out there for quite a while. One key, they're so well insulated, so well sealed, that they require very, very little heat or cooling. Most often, they'll heat, they're heated with a heat pump. Most often they're heated with a heat pump. I wish my house was built that way or remodeled that way. So I Googled, how do you convert, I have oil heat, by the way. How do you convert from oil heat to heat pump? I found in an article, a press release from the state that in August, $450 million was granted to create something called the New England Heat Pump Accelerator. And then following up in the press release, there was a mention of $100 million coming just to Massachusetts. Now, Lakeville has mostly Middleboro Gas and Electric customers, which is a municipal utility. There are some small section of people who are Eversource customers. Eversource participates in MassSafe, which has greater incentives for, to include passive house remodeling and design. Middleboro Gas Electric does not. But I've reached out, the energy audits through Middleboro Gas Electric are done by Energy New England. I've had an audit done on my house and they don't take a look at how to get the house to a passive house standard. But the point is, I reached out to the assessors. There are 3,300 residents, houses in Lakeville that also use oil heat. And from Dave's number tonight in that tax thing, there are three, almost 4,000 total residents. So 3,300 heat with oil. If those houses at my $1,200 a year heat bill, oil bill rather, not total electricity and oil, just, my number might be actually higher across the whole town, that's like $4 million going to oil companies leading Lakeville forever. You go to passive house remodel, you get savings of up to 80% on your utilities. So that would result in a smaller heat pump. And this $100 million, Energy New England will have a meeting tomorrow and decide how to allocate that across the different towns that they cover in the municipal utilities, you know, Taunton, Light, Middleboro Gas Electric. So there'll be more to come. If there's interest, I hear you're saying there is interest in this in the future, that there could be a really, maybe a grant window to open for this $100 million or however much Lakeville could get to convert from oil heat to electric with heat pumps. And also, you know, do a, very few people have a, I'm sorry, oh, I'm going off on a tangent here. Actually, the first I asked was modify the hazard mitigation plan, which I've taken as with the chief.
Yeah, and I just, I have an answer for you. It's every five years for the hazard mitigation plan. So they started it in 2021, the last time. So it was finally completed in 2022, but they started it in 2021. It's the chief and the DPW director.
Okay, then revise it in the next, about your deadline increment, okay?
Yeah, we just approved it.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
All right, well, that, this is
To start?
A summary of things that we could do that would be great and, you know.
Yeah, I think you'd be a great addition to the committee with all your ideas and being able to share that. So that's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you.
I'd recommend to Madam Chair, like, speak to energy advisory and speak to planning, since they do the housing production plan.
Sure, yeah.
So those would be the, those are the two best avenues to get those updates done.
Well, the housing production plan, it's crossed my brain to do an energy, a housing energy plan with an inventory of, you know, the age of the houses, you know, what types of fuel is, are used across town, not just oil, but gas, electric, you know, and get an idea of the age of the houses.
Not only that, but the new housing that's coming in, anyone building new housing.
Well, to the new housing, the thought might be to get the best possible new house built, vote to approve the optional specialized building code so that passive house is required by code.
Ooh.
33%.
Ooh.
It's going through Massachusetts. All the towns around Boston have approved this code. And it impacts, well, so I hear the, the ooh.
Oh, yeah, I know, anytime, anytime you want to suit a new code, it puts a mandate or, you know, on the, it's, I wish that people had the option like yourself to be able to engage in something, you know, if they, if they chose, but yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, you know.
All right. I know, I don't want to, I don't want to challenge it or, you know, but this is great. So check in with the chief and maybe he can reach out to Franklin Moniz and then maybe we can...
Email as well as that select board email address, so I'll follow up with him, talk to him in person.
Excellent. And stay tuned about the Energy Advisory Committee, too. We'll reach out when we, once we have a date.
So on the, as I combine two topics here, possible huge energy savings for residents if they go with passive house remodeling and heat pumps. Huge, huge savings. And you also have, if the vote goes, as it, as it probably will for the fire station, residents will be facing what could be considered a huge tax increase. Well, the thought I would like to offer is that the energy savings could actually be more savings than the tax increase. So that the residents will be keeping cash in their pocket month over month by spending less on energy and even paying the money due each quarter for the tax bill.
Yeah.
Right, so that's a possible way to get folks, you know, if you, all right.
No, it's, oh, good job.
Thank you for the insight. I appreciate it.
Okay, we all have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for having these meetings. And covering 24 agenda items, it's like, oh.
Bam.
I'm gonna look at the old column because I'm curious as to, back when we did the window project, I was looking at that board, whatever it is, three letters, four letters?
MSBA, yeah.
Yeah.
And they had a lot on their website about building green schools, schools that actually do not have a utility bill. I wonder if this is that with the...
Oh, boy, look out Energy Advisory Committee, John's coming.
We'll see you on the night.
It's good stuff, John.
So again, fire station, you want to build a station that's going to have a debt, 22 million at four and a quarter over 25 years, pays about $69 million in interest. I did the calculator.
But the hope is we don't need all the contingencies and it's closer to 14, 15.
So, but the, the, we also want to have a station that's going to have monthly utility bills getting higher and higher every year.
Exactly.
And, you know, let's build it right. We have it new and we're doing so much building across town, you know, anyway.
I know.
For your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You guys have a great night.
Good night.
All right.
And so we have something from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, notice of filing and public hearings. And I've, this is from NSTAR and I believe this is something that if they're changing any services, plans or commitment to those residents, they have to have a hearing. So this is available in our packet on our website as posted by Tracy. We also have a letter from Xfinity for important information, price changes. And yeah, so I don't see any price increase here, but the letter is, oh, there it is, the letter's available. Pricing updates. Okay, it's available in our packet. And something from the Cannabis Control Commission came in as an email. Key regulatory reforms for the cannabis delivery, testing, small business expansion and patient access. So we've got some updates there. But if anybody's ever interested in information on the cannabis control, kind of where it's at, the changes, take a look at their website. It's not as always easy to navigate, but there's good information out there. If people are interested in kind of where it's been, where it is and where it's going.
Madam Chair, is there anything that we need to do here for this how municipalities prepare section for updating local ordinances?
On the cannabis?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. I, Andrew, if you, if you receive another notification, just, you know, kind of let us know if there's something that, you know, from, obviously from municipality, but I don't think so, Mo.
Okay, and then they have upcoming meetings about social consumption, which is bars of marijuana.
Bars?
Bars.
A hookah bar?
A little bit. So I would think we'd want to get ahead of that if there is something for us to look at.
Anybody is welcome to sit in on those meetings. They're very long and...
And then they change their requirements three days later?
Yep, so.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. All right. Lastly, I'll entertain a motion to, so it is 8:30 on the nose. So I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Educators Association of Freetown Lakeville. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board and the chair so declares and pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief, and pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town planner, and not to return to open session.
Madam Chair, apologize to do this again. I meant to catch you before you started. We have a mismatch in agendas here. The agenda posted to the calendar does not include the town planner, but the agenda packet does.
If it's whatever is posted to the calendar
Right.
is what it is, so.
Let me just check because it was a revision. So there should be two different postings on that.
I'll double check, but I didn't see one. Nope. There's a revision onto the minutes and agenda area of the website, but not the calendar section.
I know. So the town calendar is our public record, our public posting for meetings. So because I thought that the revised agenda was supposed to be posted.
Yeah, it was. Let's look. Hold, please. I'm looking at the town calendar. I'm looking at my emails. Oh, why does this is doing this?
And select board, there was nothing revised on there.
Yeah, I don't want to spell. Okay, so we can't...
Okay, so I'm going to reread this. This was not posted on the, so it was not updated. So the revise, the revision will not go through. Okay.
Do you have the wording that you...
I do. So I am going to entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A 2. Two, where is it? 21A 2? It should be three. It should be three. Okay, so now there's a mismatch here, too. Okay, two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief, and not to return to public session. That's my motion. Second, well, I entertained it, so so moved over here with Brian, seconded with Brenna. Roll, please.
Tarni Hue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Andito, aye.
Aye.
Okay, at 8:30.